Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for December 7th, 2021. Happy holidays to all. And at this time, maybe we'll take a moment to pause on the 80th anniversary of Pearl Harbor Day. Take a minute to pause, remember, and reflect. Thank you very much. Let's move ahead then to item number one. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brennan?
Here.
Councilmember Lehman?
Here.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras?
Here.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. Thank you very much. Item number two, let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Moving ahead then to 3A, the recognition of the 2021 Show Off Shakopee Photo Contest winners. Chelsea?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Tonight, we have Amanda McKnight to present the photo contest winners. She's been our communications manager since the middle of August. This is her first time joining us in the council chambers this evening. She's been a longtime community member, and we are very happy to have her onboard. And you'll learn much more about her and her department later on this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm super excited to present the 2021 winners of our Show Off Shakopee Photo Contest. As you know, this has been a big hit in the community in years past. And without further ado, I will present the winners. So when I call you up, I'll give you your framed photo and your prize money. And then we'll go stand in front, and at the end, Mayor will take a photo with you. So first, we have Lynn Anderson with Hiawatha. She won the innovating category. Our categories go with our new city tagline this year, so innovating, entertaining, and thriving.
Very creative.
All right, next up, we have in the entertaining category, Sunset Kicks by Zach Totten. Okay, next up in our thriving category, we have Daybreak Over the Water Tower by Cheryl Vatabon-Cor. All right, and last, we have our grand prize winner, Reading Break by Tracy Shantz.
Mayor, do you want to come down so we can take a photo?
Counselor.
Yeah, grand prize right in the center. Can we squish just a smidge frozen? I know there's COVID concerns. All right, ready? Right here. Are you ready, Tracy? One, two, three. Fantastic. Thank you all so much for being here.
Thank you all that participated in our yearly contest. I, like many things, believe it brings out the best in our community. And photogs, photo tags are always nice to see, and they will, copy will hang in City Hall for a year. Thank you all, and congratulations. Let's move ahead then to item number four, approve of the agenda. Chelsea, are there any changes, corrections?
Not from staff.
Thank you very much. Counselor Brennan?
I make a motion to approve the agenda of December 7th, 2021.
Okay, and I have a second from Counselor Contreras. Further discussion on the agenda? Further discussion? Discussion, discussion? All in favor by voice vote? Say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving ahead to item number five, consent agenda. Are there any changes, corrections? Chelsea?
Not from staff, Mayor.
Okay. Counselor Whiting?
I'd like to pull item 5C1, please.
5C1 off. Others, Counselor Lehman?
5A6.
Others, Counselor Whiting?
I make the motion to approve the consent business as amended.
Second.
Counselor Contreras seconds that motion to approve the modified consent agenda, which is, includes 5A6 off the consent agenda and 5C1 off the consent agenda.
Correct.
Further discussion? There is no further discussion. Before we vote, we would read the modified consent agenda into the public record. Chelsea?
Item 5A1 approves the meeting minutes from November 16th, 2021. 5A2 adopts Resolution 2021-170, establishing polling places for calendar year 2022. 5A3 authorizes the finance director to write off uncollectible accounts receivable and return payments. 5A4 accepts the donation of a veteran's memorial plaque from Mike Hannel. 5A5 approves a taproom on sale Sunday and small business, small brewery license for Mana Brewing, which will be located at 129 Home Street, South. 5B1 adopts Resolution 2021-165, approving an application to the FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant. 5D1 adopts Resolution 2021-173, which sets a public hearing to review the proposed vacation of drainage and utility easement in Dean Lake's 8th Edition. 5E1 adopts Resolution 2021-166, which approves an application to the MPCA Resiliency Grant. And 5E2 adopts Resolution 2021-167, which accepts work on the 2020 Batuminus Overlay Project and authorizes final payment in the amount of 13,605.10 cents.
Thank you very much. The modified consent agenda has been read into the record. I have a motion and a second. There would be no further discussion. All, by voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The motion passes. The modified consent agenda has been passed. Moving ahead then to item number six. I would like to call on any resident citizen that would like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome. On an item not on the agenda. Have we received any electronic communication?
Not to my knowledge, Mayor.
Okay. Seeing no resident wishing to come forward, we would move ahead then, and we would move to item number seven, which is business that was removed from the consent. And we would start with 5A6, which is an amendment to the Tax Increment Cooperative Agreement, and...
That was, that was me, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. And you have a, your question, Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. The question I had was, by changing the amount of the administrative, fee, I guess it's called? If we didn't do that, would the excess dollars above the improvements then go into the general fund instead of EDA administration?
Mayor and council members, that is not correct. It would, what would happen is ultimately you'd pay the pay as you go, well, pay the development cost back a little bit quicker, and it would decertify early.
So we're taking some of the, we're taking more of the tax dollars generated from the project and putting it toward the administration of the EDA? Is that what this is asking us to do?
That is correct. It's, I would say that is accurate. It does a couple of different things. So at first, first of all, we were collecting nine tenths of a percent for admin, so it would raise it to 10%. So we would be able to capture more admin costs. Anything within that 10%, there's also, also as part of this agreement, it would allow us to pool those dollars. So if we have another qualified project outside of this TIF district, and we want to utilize those funds towards that project, it would allow us to be able to do that as well.
I guess, Mayor, my, my overall question is, how do we, instead of keep pooling these dollars and using them for economic development, how do we get these actual generated property tax dollars into the general fund to pay for services that they're receiving? Like the rest of us, we pay our property taxes, the money goes to cops, fire, street sweepers, and stuff like this. So by, by doing this, we're pooling it, pooling it, using it for something else. The something else will get another 15-year deal or something. They won't be paying it to the general fund for services. The rest of us will subsidize it, and it just keeps going.
But this project, we're allowed by, I believe, state law to go up to 10% for admin costs. This project's a $400 million project for a lot of stuff, so we're trying to get our, some of our direct costs back. And, and actually, this project is scheduled already to be decertified earlier. The values keep moving up on that. It's singular that the best thing can happen is we can continue to build that out at Canterbury, excuse me, on this project, the Fourth Street?
Amazon.
I apologize. That the surrounding area just gets paid off that much faster. But I think that we're not taking our, allowed on the expense side that we should have. And I wasn't part, part of this initial agenda in the first place. Counselor Whiting?
You know, I thought about this one too, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but we collect a lot more percentages off the other TIF districts that we have. Is that correct? That is correct. Usually, it's a higher than nine tenths of a percent. I think when this one was originally set up, they were worried about whether or not that we could repay all the development costs. It's actually the city and the county that are sharing the cost of the projects and being repaid from the TIF. I remember the conversation, and the county had, there was, who was, who was going to get what out of this TIF? And, and we knew that it was at the point of when we signed this TIF that it was, the money wasn't, wasn't fully there to make it valuable, but we knew it would be. And I remember that conversation, and I think we had that, it was, it wasn't paying us back at the time, and we can maybe go back and look at that. But if we're getting more out of every other TIF district, and I don't know about the earlier ones, but the current ones, I would say, then this makes a lot of sense to get what we are valued out, so we get paid back. It's this, it's either one fund that the taxpayers are taking the money out of, or another fund that the taxpayers have paid into to, that we draw the money from.
Mayor, my last comment would be, if we're actually going to take more out of this TIF to pay for administrative costs, you think that would lower the administrative cost moving forward? But we have a increase in the EDA levy to cover those costs, so...
Not necessarily those costs.
Well, what's it used for, then?
This is, this, this proposed is for an increase up to the state law limit that would allocate those expenses for the true expenses of this project.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would suggest that we've already incurred these expenses, that we just didn't collect back from all the different paperwork we've been doing on these TIFs.
Who do you suggest paid for them expenses?
Well, I mean, as a city.
So the taxpayers paid for them expenses?
Through the city.
So let's give this money back to the taxpayers.
The city has already used their staff to, to deal with a lot of this TIF, is what I'm saying. They didn't collect the, the fees to pay their wages.
More questions? Discussion? Counselor Whiting?
I'd make a motion to adopt Resolution Number R 2021-174, Resolution approving an amended and restated Tax Increment Cooperative Agreement relating to the Tax Increment Financing District Number 17.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Contreras. I do very much apologize for my earlier comments talking about Canterbury in regard to this Fourth Avenue reconstruction, TIF that was established many years ago. Further, I have a motion on the table and a second. Further discussion? 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 All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Thank you very much for the lively discussion. Moving ahead then to the other item that was removed off consent, 5C1, which is a monetary donation for our aquatic programming. And Jay will present. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You're familiar that we have some wonderful partnerships and volunteers, sponsors, and donors. You don't always get to hear the story behind the story. We can't do a lot of what we do without those relationships. And tonight, I'm, I'm just really excited to, for you to be able to hear a little bit of the story behind the story, not only what we're doing, but why it's being done that way. And so I'm going to ask Sheri to come and expound on that a little bit.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Sue Westegard has been an active community center member for many years. Sue believes in the importance of learning to swim, something that she learned to do in 2019, and continues to do multiple times throughout the week. Sue's mother Helen was very proud that her daughter learned to swim, and now Sue wants to make sure that others have that same opportunity. In memory, in memory of her mother Helen, Sue Westegard has generously given a donation of $1,500 for aquatic programming. She, along with Caitlin Nadoo, who's also here tonight, our aquatics recreation supervisor, is working with other community partners on a swimming initiative that will give the opportunity for others, the opportunity to learn water safety. Sue Westegard has been a strong supporter of our older active adult programs and community center amenities, and we now want to thank her for her support for this aquatic program as well. Mr. Mayor and Council, we ask that you accept Resolution R 2021-168, accepting the monetary donation of $1,500 from Sue Westegard. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. And Westegard and Mother Helen, thank you very much for this donation. I, I too believe that swimming and getting used to the water is vitally important in, in almost every way of life, and thank you very much. Counselor Brennan?
I want to thank you also. I spoke to a woman recently who talked about the fact that she didn't feel comfortable going to the pool and swimming because of her religion, her religious needs, and the needs to, to be, be separate from the men. So I'm really glad that you recognized this, and I, I just appreciate that you saw that, that there was a need and recognized it as such, so thank you.
Counselor Whiting?
That's one of the great wins of the Shakopee Diversity Alliance, that they started a program like that, and it actually taught a lot of folks to swim. And I'm just grateful that that can continue, because I'm sure, you know, that only reached a portion of what it could have, so that's great, and thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Lehman?
Are, are these folks in the audience?
Sue Westegard is here tonight, along with Caitlin Nadoo. The program that we are running actually starts in February, and it will be held in cooperation with the school district at East Middle School.
Well, thank you for your donation. My older sister was involved in the gift of swimming for very young, young kids. She's in Florida, she lives in Florida. And the reason is, is because there's oceans all the way around it, and there's, there's a lot of swimming deaths at all ages because they don't know how to swim. And it saves a lot of lives, so appreciate your donation and your efforts.
Thank you. Thank you for this. I know a lot of women will be very happy for this. I know some of them, and they are very grateful for this. And water safety lessons, obviously, is something we, we need, living in so many, living in a state with so many lakes. So, yeah, it's essential. Thank you very much.
Counselor Brennan?
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number R 2021-168, accepting the monetary donation of $1,500 from Sue Westegard.
A second.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Whiting. Further discussion? Discussion? I can't stress enough, I grew up on Lake Superior. Swimming is a, a life lesson that folks need to learn, and, and then that, I don't, I've seen people that are scared of water, and, and then the things you can't do and are eliminated. So the familiarity around water and, and learning to swim is very important. I can't tell you how pleased I am to see your donation. Thank you very much. Further discussion? Discussion by voice vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, that concludes all of our business from consent. We would move ahead then to item number 8A, our 2022 Budget and Property Tax Levy Public Meeting and Presentation. And this is listed as a public hearing, so Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I make a motion to open a public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Further discussion? Discussion? Discussion by voice vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. The public hearing is now open. Nate, your presentation, please.
Good evening again, Mayor and council members. Nate Reinhardt, Finance Director for the City of Shakopee. As you mentioned, tonight, we have a public meeting on the 2022 Proposed Budget and Property Tax Levy. The city annually adopts a budget and property tax levy for the upcoming year. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to provide the public with information on the city's 2022 proposed budget and 2022 proposed property tax levy, and allows the general public a chance to comment on the proposed budget and property tax levy prior to their adoption. I did put a pie chart on this slide here that shows the breakdown of property taxes based on the preliminary levies for homeowners here in Shakopee. The one exception is it does not include any voter-approved referendum, since those were approved after September 30th. The portion we'll be discussing tonight is the city levy, which represents 28.9% of the property taxes paid. There were several steps city staff and city council have taken to get us up to this point. In May, city council had a work session to discuss the city's long-term financial plan, which serves as a broad overview and perspective of city finances, including reviewing historical trends and 10-year general fund projections. In June, staff began reviewing revenue projections and other key considerations that might impact the 2022 budget, as well as had a budget listening session open to, open to the public to gain any public feedback or comments on the city budget. In July, staff presented the Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan, commonly referred to as the CIP, at a work session. And then at a work session in September, on September 1st, we presented a preliminary levy and budget to council. On September 15th, the city council set the preliminary tax levy. The preliminary levy needs to be set by September 30th per state statute. Then after that point in time, the levy cannot increase, it can only decrease. The property tax statements mailed by the county in November reflected what was approved in the preliminary levy. Also, on September 15th, the city council adopted- Uh, also on September fifteenth, the city council adopted the, uh, CIP, which included detailed information on, uh, projects for the next five years, as well as, uh, a listing of upcoming projects for the next fifteen years. Uh, which brings us up to, uh, tonight where we're holding the public meeting, uh, on the proposed levy and budget. Um, and then at the next council meeting, we'll ask for, uh, final approval. Our two thousand twenty two proposed budget was developed on, um, overlying financial objectives from both the city council and staff. Uh, though these would include maintaining a low and stable tax rate and continuing to be one of the lowest tax communities in the metro. Uh, part of that is achieved through, uh, increased tax capacity, um, for both market growth, uh, in current and new property. Uh, additionally, in two thousand twenty, the city council adopted the two thousand twenty to twenty four strategic plan, uh, which lays out the city council's strategic priorities, uh, while serving as a broad guiding document for city staff to do its work. Uh, the strategic priorities include, uh, financial stability, enhanced community strengths, uh, effective public services and communication. Uh, these are all key considerations within the two thousand twenty two budget. Uh, on the administration side, uh, we want to contend to emphasize, uh, financial transparency transparency and and that our financial decisions are made with a future in mind, uh, to ensure the city's ongoing ability to provide quality services at a reasonable price. Uh, the budget book and budget presentations are all available on the city's website, and, um, we welcome public comments and feedback, uh, really anytime throughout the year, not just, uh, at these public meetings. Not change the levy from what was approved as the preliminary levy in September. Uh, the proposed city levy of is, uh, twenty two million four hundred and eighty six thousand. Uh, this is an increase of a million four hundred and sixty eight thousand, or six point nine nine percent from last year. Uh, the proposed ED levy, EDA levy is five hundred thousand, uh, which is a hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase from last year. Uh, we are proposing to to continue the seven hundred thousand, um, capital improvement levy. Uh, however, the park development levy, which was, uh, removed with the two thousand twenty one budget, uh, we're not proposing to, uh, restore that with the two thousand twenty two budget. Uh, and then for reference, when we talk about a one percent levy increase or decrease, uh, that amounts to about two hundred and ten thousand in in funding. Um, here's a summary of the twenty two, um, preliminary general fund budget. Uh, I have, um, split this in four different sections, uh, that are, um, outside, uh, the property taxes. In total, we're seeing about a one point two million or eleven in eleven percent increase in non-tax revenues. Uh, on the expenditure side, we're seeing about a two point four million or an eight point one percent increase. Uh, and then we've also adjusted, uh, the transfers to the general fund from sewer and storm. Uh, and then the last, um, item here, uh, is the use of prior earned, uh, building permit revenue. Uh, with larger projects, uh, we may see revenues collected in one year, but, um, incur inspection costs for that project in the following year. Uh, within the two thousand twenty one budget, um, so last year's budget, we used five hundred thousand to offset operational costs. Uh, the two thousand twenty two budget utilizes two hundred and fifty thousand, so, um, half as much as the previous year. Uh, and then I'll break down the details of each of these on the next few slides. Um, also, overall, the city is anticipating a net increase in, uh, rev- revenue sources excluding the property tax levy of, uh, a million two hundred and ten thousand. Uh, we did add an allowance for uncollectible accounts, which wasn't included in previous year's budgets. Um, we looked at what we've, um, budgeted to what we've actually collected for property taxes, and it's been an average of about ninety eight point four percent. Um, it's not always necessarily, um, non-tax payments. It can be, uh, property value adjustments that also impact that. Um, so we've added about a half percent or seventy nine thousand five hundred, um, as a allowance for those uncollectibles. Uh, we've estimated the, um, pilot contribution from SPOC to increase by two hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, the ci- city's building permits have been strong over the past few years, um, with, uh, influx of commercial and residential development. Uh, we increased those budgeted revenues by seven hundred thirty three thousand. Uh, engineering fees, uh, which is the portion of engineer's time that we allocate, um, to, uh, projects or developments, we've increased that by a hundred and seven thousand. And then, um, MSA state aid, which comes from the the gas tax, um, and provides, uh, maintenance to those MSA streets, are forecasted at a forty one thousand dollar decrease. Um, for recreational revenues, um, which were the most impacted by COVID nineteen, uh, for two thousand twenty two, we're predicting a normal year of operations. Uh, we have increased the budgeted revenue for the ice arena, um, as a result of the Shakopee State Skate School Agreement and programming. And then, uh, the recreational programs, uh, you see the decrease there. That's for, uh, decreasing adult, um, programming, as well as, um, the indoor youth sports are now, um, that revenue is now being collected by the school district. Uh, the preliminary budget also includes a seventy five thousand increase for each of the transfers from, uh, the sewer and surface water utilities, uh, which represents, um, a portion of, uh, admin costs such as, uh, finance, council, IT. Um, that has been the same amount since two thousand and fifteen. Um, like most other cities, um, operational costs are primarily driven by, uh, personnel. Uh, in two thousand twenty one, so this current year, uh, we added new positions, which included a building inspector, engineering technician, uh, communication specialist, and the conversion of a recreational specialist and ice arena specialist from part-time to full-time, um, as well as a two percent cost of living adjustment. Uh, these were not included with the original twenty one budget, uh, therefore, the first impact we're seeing here is on the two thousand twenty two budget. Uh, those changes amount to about seven hundred and forty five thousand. Um, an additional two and a half percent cost of living adjustment is proposed for two thousand twenty two, uh, which matches what's included in the three union contracts that are settled. Um, so this would be full-time, part-time, and seasonal, um, the total for all those employees, as well as the union, union groups would be about five hundred and eighty nine thousand. Um, we've added, uh, sixty five thousand for, um, the election year. Um, and then, um, for health insurance, uh, our premiums will increase by four and a half percent. Uh, we've assumed that we're going to split that equally, uh, amongst the employer and the employee, which amounts to about seventy six thousand. Uh, the city is a member of the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, um, for workers' compens- compensation insurance. Uh, statewide, we've seen a a rapid, um, arise in, uh, PTSD claims related to public safety. Uh, and as a result, we're seeing, uh, pretty significant workers' compensation rate increases. Uh, for public safety personnel, we budgeted a twenty percent, uh, increase in workers' comp, and then ten percent for the other classes, which amount to about a hundred and six thousand. Uh, step increases and other changes amount, um, to another, uh, seventy one thousand. Um, the the city established internal service funds, uh, years ago to account for, um, the replacement of equipment, buildings, uh, park assets, and other, and information technology, infrastructure, and equipment. Uh, philosophy behind that is to take out the large swings from year to year in the tax levy, uh, and then charge rents back over time to the departments, accumulate enough, uh, funds to be able to make those purchases when, uh, the replacement schedules come up. Uh, in two thousand eighteen, uh, staff took an in-depth analysis of the equipment fund, uh, and then made a change to, uh, adjust the rental charges of equipment replacement that have a, uh, greater lifecycle than ten years to future costs versus versus the original purchase price. Uh, that increase was phased over a four-year period. Uh, two thousand twenty two is the last of that four-year period. Uh, that increase, uh, amounts to about a hundred and three thousand, and then increases in replacement costs, uh, as well as, um, added equipment adds to adds another.
I have a question on that. Uh, so we've been doing a gradual increase in our depreciate, what I call our depreciation fund, but it's our replacement equipment fund. Um, it, that's going to be on a much better track moving forward then?
Yep, and it primarily had to do, uh, with the fire trucks. The fire trucks actually went up, were were increasing at a pretty rapid rate. So when we got to the point of replacing a fire truck at the original cost twenty years ago, it wasn't matching up. Um, so yes would be the answer to that, and, um, yeah, we believe we have, we'll have sufficient funding.
Thank you.
Um, we also made a similar adjustment to the, uh, buildings fund, uh, this year. Um, we would take our buildings and, um, basically depreciate them over fifty years or charge rent over fifty years. Uh, however, there were, um, improvements within that building, such as mechanical, HVAC, things like that, that have shorter life cycles than fifty years. We've now split those out, um, over thirty years, which resulted in a, um, an increased, uh, allocation for those items of a hundred and twelve thousand. And then, um, other services and charges, so all other costs that we haven't talked about. Um, we had a net increase of about four hundred and sixty two thousand, which includes, uh, ninety six thousand, uh, allocated for the spending of travel contributions, uh, which previously we haven't accounted for the the spending side of that revenue. Uh, fifty K for, uh, Emerald Ash Bore mitigation, uh, forty thousand for the building inspections and permitting software, which is our new Tyler software, um, and thirty four thousand for recreational software, um, which, um, yeah, which represents the increased cost from our previous software. Uh, thirty thousand for fleet, uh, vehicle tracking software, uh, twenty six thousand five hundred for con- coney prosecution costs, and twenty five thousand for a salary study. Uh, the remainder of that increase is not anything new. It's just primarily related to, uh, contractual service increases or, uh, materially increases. Um, the city's estimated market value, uh, is at seven billion. Uh, this is an increase of four hundred and sixty two million or seven point one percent from last year. Uh, new construction accounts for a hundred and sixty two million or thirty four point nine percent of that increase. Uh, new construction allows the tax levy to be spread ac- spread across a larger tax base, which, um, reduces the tax burden of existing, uh, taxpayers. Uh, the apartment market value grew at the fastest rate, uh, with eighty five point, uh, three million in new growth and total market value increase of a hundred and fifteen million. Uh, on the flip side, we did see a small, uh, decrease in commercial estimated, uh, market value, um, as a result of, uh, pandemic, um, impacting values of lodging, fitness, smaller retail stores, sit-down restaurants, and movie theaters. Uh, since two thousand eighteen, uh, the city has seen, uh, estimated market value increase by one point nine billion or, uh, just under thirty seven percent since two thousand eighteen. Uh, the city levy is a a flat dollar amount for taxes, which is then spread against all, uh, taxable properties and they're to their, um, in proportion to their percentage of total tax capacity of the city. Uh, residential represents, uh, forty seven point one percent of the city's tax capacity, uh, which is similar to what we saw last year. Uh, you can see that in two thousand twenty two apartment and industrial, um, size increases in their portion of tax capacity. Um, total tax capacity of the city is, uh, roughly sixty two point seven billion, or billion, I should say. Um, the gross tax capacity, um, is adjusted for the fiscal disparities program, which is unique to the seven county, uh, metro area here in Minnesota. Uh, forty percent of commercial and industrial growth since nineteen seventy one gets contributed to the pool, and in turn, we receive a distribution based on, uh, population and market value of all, uh, property per person compared to the average market value per person in that metro area. Uh, we are one of the larger net contributors to the program. The two thousand twenty one data showed that we were twelfth of, uh, a hundred and seventy nine communities. Uh, this chart shows, uh, Shakopee's fiscal disparities, um, net contribution in terms of tax capacity, uh, with the growing, um, industrial tax base has gone from one point four million of tax capacity in two thousand twelve to six point two million in two thousand twenty one. Uh, just the change from last year alone was almost one point two million of tax capacity. Uh, and then I put that, um, in context to what percentage of total, um, tax capacity it is. It's about eight percent of additional tax capacity. Uh, the city of Shakopee is contributing to that fiscal disparities program.
Question.
Yep.
So of the six million that we're contributing, what do we get back?
So this this is the net. So this is the what we've contributed and what we've got back, the net of that amount. So we're we're contributing more than that, and we're getting a share back. I I wish I had those.
I know we're a loser in it, but i- i- how much are we sending to other cities?
Yep, that that is what that dollar amount represents, six point two million.
And how much do we get back?
Um, uh, like I said, I don't I don't have the circles, but I I can speak general, right? Um, so I think it's roughly ten million, and we get back about one point eight, two million, let's say. Um, keep in mind, I don't have those numbers in front of me, so don't hold me to it.
Substantially less than what we give out.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, if I can. This this kind of needs a little brackets around it. This is money that's taxed to our commercial industrial base that goes to other communities that don't have a commercial industrial base to help them. That's the aid to, uh, what's the term they use, uh, local aid or local government aid?
Um, it's it's it.
It's fiscal disparities.
Local government aid is is separate. So this is, there's two different things. So we also do not get local government aid, which is coming from the state. Um, so this is fiscal disparities, like I said, is is.
A separate check.
Unique, unique to the the metro area.
We don't get the check. We we write the check.
Correct.
Yeah.
One more question, if I may. Who's the largest recipient of fiscal disparities?
You're putting him on the spot.
Um, I I'd have to.
I've heard, I've heard Minneapolis, St. Paul.
I guess that's probably true, yeah.
And that seems really odd to me because they have a larger industrial base than we do.
I I I think Minneapolis is actually a contributor to the program as well because it's it's they've had their values increased.
We could get that information, uh, of of who is the largest recipient. I know that, uh, you know, I always look at this slide, and over the last, cause it, you know, hundred years, we built a great community here. It's well-balanced. Our commercial industrial is a sense of pride here because you can work here. Um, we have some great, great companies. And then we turn around and give it, share that with other communities. I I wish it was just neutral so we could capture those dollars and then keep our taxes lower. And, uh, this is a, the state dis- disparities pool is run by the state. Um, it's separate than LGA, but, uh, um, it, to go from one point four million dollars in two thousand twelve to six point two, almost six point three million dollars of two dollars that that could contribute to our tax base and keep our taxes lower would be great, but.
A million dollars more than last year.
I I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on this, but to me, my personal thought on what bothers me the most about this issue is years ago, the the forefathers of this city council decided they wanted to have a diversified community with commercial, uh, residential, industrial, and they wanted that diversity because when you have downturns, whether it's in the housing market or, you know, the COVID, it really hit the business sector, you have a lot of, uh, ability to work through that, okay? There's other councils that have decided they don't want to have, you know, jobs in their community. They don't want to have industry. They don't want to have, they they made that decision on their own. They were elected bodies by their constituents to make them decisions, and yet they're not held accountable to them decisions. We are. We get to fund it because they decided they didn't want to have these things. And it just doesn't seem fair to, it doesn't make sense. They made a conscious decision in their community, and some communities have all heavy industrial, and that's just what they are. And they made that decision, and that's their authority to make. But they also have to then accept the reality of of what they have and the lack of diversity in the markets.
Well, and it's the, it's a bedroom, you know, the the gainers are bedroom communities that don't have a lot of commercial industrial, and then they get some of these dollars. So, you know, uh, we have a well-balanced community, you're right. Um, and then we give to others that don't have a well-balanced community, and that, they're well, very well-spoken there. I I feel penalized as a, as we sit here as leadership of our city. Um, I feel penalized for creating a well-balanced community, but this is by state law, and, uh, we pound away every year at, uh, through our lobbying efforts with the League of Minnesota Cities and the, uh, and Metro Cities as well. So, more or less, or we can continue, Nate. Thanks.
Sure. Uh, this chart compares the city's tax capacity and rate over the last ten years, including the two thousand twenty two, uh, preliminary levy. Uh, based on the preliminary assessment, uh, value data, the proposed tax levy would have a slight increase on the city's tax rate, uh, very small, from thirty two point one oh six to thirty two point one seven four, uh, increase of point zero six eight percent. Um, and like I said, this compares that rate and tax capacity over the past ten years. Uh, looking at residential values, um, forty five percent of homes in Shakopee saw an increase in their home, uh, value of less than five percent. Forty three saw an increase between five and ten percent. Um, so that's eighty eight percent in the zero to ten percent, um, increase range. Uh, and then eleven percent saw an increase of more than ten percent. So, um, different homes obviously will be adjusted at at different values, depending on how much your your value went up or be impacted by property taxes different. Uh, looking at the different valued home, a home valued in the twenty-fifth percentile, uh, saw an increase of seven point five percent in their home values, uh, which equates to about a forty six dollar tax increase. And then on the opposite side, a home valued in the seventy-fifth percentile would see a six point five percent increase in their home value, uh, equating to a seventy one dollar tax increase.
And just a point and note here, the the city of Shakopee does not set the value of your home. The county does, and they do it in the spring and send out a valuation, uh, form. And then there's a process if you think your value is too high to address that, talk about it at the county level and through the assessor's office, or if your market value is too low. But, uh, we go, our taxes and our tax rate is based off our market value set by the county.
Uh, for the median value home, uh, increasing by six point seven percent, uh, from two hundred and sixty six thousand eight hundred to two hundred and eighty four thousand seven hundred. Uh, this equates to a sixty five dollar, uh, seven point nine percent increase in annual property taxes. Uh, absent any change in value from last year, uh, homeowners can expect a tax, uh, increase of two dollars or point two percent. Uh, this chart here, uh, provides information on that median value home and city property taxes paid since two thousand and sixteen. taxes paid since two thousand and sixteen.
The thing that's always bothered me about this chart is that the lower-valued homes have the higher increase compared to the higher-value homes. So, our our lower or middle-income uh households, uh, if that's accurately defined by the property value, uh, see the largest increases, and it's hard to hard to swallow.
Yeah.
I know we don't drive that, but it's much harder for that family to have them increases than it is other families that are.
I agree in the dynamic coming off the the recession in two thousand and eight, and then we saw and what we've seen in the last five or six years with the growth in value of houses. It's the, those houses at under two fifty or three hundred now, actually, that have gone up the most proportionally, and then they get hit because those houses are in such high demand, um, driving up faster than than any other sector.
Well, what the the bigger problem is that the affordable housing that we have in Shakopee is becoming unaffordable, whether it's by the market value or whether it's by taxation at all levels or fees, you know? Um, and then we turn around and we want affordable housing, so we do some affordable housing projects and we charge the what once was affordable housings, they pay for part of that, whether it's their state taxes or federal taxes or city taxes. It's kind of a conundrum we find ourselves in. So, we're taking a lot of affordable houses, making them unaffordable for a very few affordable houses, and we're losing ground in that aspect. We'd be better off trying to keep our existing affordable housing stock affordable.
Um, and then I was just gonna make one one other general comment. Um, again, when we talk about a one percent increase, decrease in the levy, um, it amounts to about nine dollars on the median value home, so any percentage change, you can think of it in terms of nine dollars of property taxes on the average home or median value home. Um, in November, the state released uh information on the city adopted preliminary levies. Uh, this slide provides the preliminary levies of our ten most comparable cities. Uh, the city of Shakopee being higher than seven of those and lower than three. Uh, the statewide average for cities is six point five percent, five point six percent, so we're slightly above the statewide average. Uh, on the next slide here, I'd use the same compare, ten comparable cities and um uh did it over five years, including the twenty twenty-two uh preliminary levy. Uh, total levy uh right changes ranged in the five-year period from sixteen point five to forty point four percent with Shakopee being at uh nineteen point six percent. Uh, and then also looked at the averages, and the average annual levy increase was five point seven five percent per year for these uh these cities.
This is a five-year stack?
Correct.
I know we've seen this slide uh before in recent years, and it, I think it really helps to to look over the longer term like that, a five-year picture rather than a snapshot of one year or another year. Couple of years ago, we had a tax cut. Um, but it, you know, I think this is a, it shows Shakopee in a favorable light, but it really shows other communities that are either inner-city or inner-suburb, inner-ring suburb cities, or even growing cities, Lakeville, Blaine, uh, Inver Grove Heights, they're growing pretty good like Shakopee, not a, they're going faster. But Golden Valley, St. Louis Park, those would be considered um inner uh ring suburbs that are kind of built out, so um I think a five-year stack reads very well and very fair.
And I think it kind of relates to our first discussion on our long-term financial plan, too, is looking at things from a wider perspective or a long, longer-term perspective. It guys, it kind of gives you a different viewpoint of where we're headed and if it's within reason. Um, just a couple more slides here. So, the city operates two utilities, sanitary sewer and stormwater. Uh, the operations and capital uh needs of these cities are funded through user charges. Uh, last year, if you recall, we had no change in city rates, um, and then the Met Council rate for sewer went down, so overall, our customers saw a decrease. Uh, currently reflected in the budget is an increase in the city's usage rate of uh um eighty-five cents per one thousand gallons to ninety cents. Um, and then a a change in the city's fix rate from two ninety to three twenty-five and a change in the Met Council rate from two sixty to two seventy-four, and then no change in stormwater rates. Um, for a typical user of five thousand gallons of water a month, this equates to about fifteen dollars a year, so that is what's currently reflected in the budget. Um, I put it, put a, off to the right there, I put, um, tonight, we've got a utility rate study work session, uh, so those recommendations are off to the right there, which is relatively close to what um what we have currently um planned in our budget. Um, that alternative, I did the math, and the same five thousand gallon user a month, uh, it comes to thirteen dollars and twenty-five cents per year, so it's right in the ballpark of.
On a dollar a month.
If the rate study on the right is showing three dollars flat rate per household, why are we proposing three and a quarter?
Uh, we're sort of a chicken and egg concept. So, we've had our, we've had our budget put together and compiled since the preliminary levy and the the, that information we just got recently, so we had, it's not reflected in the in the budget. So, within the budget document that was provided, it's based on what we had anticipated prior to receiving the the rate study.
So, what's the flat rate per household gonna be in twenty twenty-two?
Um, that will be determined based on our discussion later, so. Yep, I just didn't want you to, well, I wanted you to be aware that what's in our, being reflected and what was provided to you in that budget document is different than what you'll be being presented today, but without within reason. Um, though, so Shakopee is below um comparable in surrounding cities when it comes to cost comparison of city property taxes, sanitary sewer and stormwater charges, so the utilities that we operate as a city. Uh, the following chart provides the twenty twenty-one annual cost of services. Um, I'd be two hundred and fifty thousand dollar value home, uh, which is slightly below our our median value home and five thousand gallons of water usage per month. Uh, these are twenty twenty-one rates as we um did not know what the rates for next year would be for the um various comparison cities. Uh, as you can see, um, from the chart above, the city compares uh favorably and is the lowest in comparison with these communities. Um, then just one kind of slide here that highlights uh what we talked about. Um, so proposed levy, very little impact on the city tax rate. Um, we have decreased the tax rate over the past uh four years, and the twenty twenty-two proposed rate is below the twenty twenty rate of thirty-three point nine seven. Uh, and then for the median value home, uh, it equates to about a sixty-five dollar annual increase. Uh, absent any change in value um to the median value home, they would see about a two dollar uh increase. Um, again, this is a public uh meeting, and public is welcome to speak on the budget or property tax levy. Uh, after tonight's meeting, the budget and levy will come back to council on December twenty-first for your approval. Uh, no action is required tonight other than to invite the public to speak on the budget.
Uh, thank you, Nate, for your presentation. Uh, questions of staff? Counsel Brennan?
I I do have one question, and it's quite a few pages back on your um, your um, presentation, and it, the page is um revenue forecast, and it talks about the um pilot from Spock. And last night, um, Spock approved the pilot of five and a half percent and a half percent for the economic development. Um, is the at five, uh, half percent, is that included in that pilot, or is that, how is that gonna be accounted for so that it doesn't get, that's used appropriately for economic development?
Okay, so I'll I'll kind of give a broader answer to that question. So, similar to the the rate study, we we weren't sure what was going to be adapted with that, with the um, with the pilot fee. So, what's in there right now is probably reflective of about, within the general fund at least, is probably reflective of about five point two five percent. I tried to do the math based on this year's data because last year's data was kind of odd a little bit with COVID and and things like that. So, I think if approved, we'll probably end up with more revenue than we currently have in the budget um for uh for twenty twenty-two for the general fund, so we're probably about, probably end up with about a hundred thousand, roughly, roughly more. For the EDA levy, that has not been incorporated within the, it'll be incorporated within the economic development budget, but it's not included currently as proposed tonight. Uh, so we'd probably come back with uh some sort of budget amendment um once that gets approved, acknowledging that we have this additional funding. But it would, the EDA, if approved, that e- that half a percent for the EDA would go to the economic development fund.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question there. This shows nine point six percent for two hundred and fifty thousand increase. So, if Counselor Brennan is telling us it's a five percent increase was passed, is that correct?
Yep.
Five and a half percent was passed.
Okay, five and a half percent for the pilot or five percent for the pilot and a half a percent for EDA?
Five and a half percent for the pilot and a half a percent for the EDA.
So, would that make this two fifty less?
Um, I know, that's a, that's a very, very good question. So, I've had the chance to actually dig into these numbers, so um really what was happening the past couple of years is we, what we were budgeting for our pilot, our actuals were coming in lower than what we were receiving by a considerable amount. So, part of that, um, so previously, we were, we were represent about four, four point four percent of their their revenues coming in, um, and we're moving up to five and a half percent. Part of it is making up, um, you know, like I said, what we were budgeting versus what we're actually receiving, we're we're meshing together. I know we, the, in the past year, for example, we actually saw a decrease in what we received for revenue based on um, I guess, what they took in for revenue, right? It's all a percentage base.
Based on their quantities, correct?
It's a, so.
So, it's not an apples-apples comparison to what we budgeted last year, it's more based on what we're seeing as actuals coming in this year.
Right. So, just a little background here, the pilot subcommittee has concluded their meetings and a proposal um that was agreed upon from the subcommittee is coming both to Spock, which I believe came last night.
Yep.
And was approved. Ours will probably come on the twenty-first, and uh, and it's gonna show this pilot that we worked on with new parameters. Um, it's too late in the year and too late in the budget process to get that incorporated into the twenty twenty-two budget. Um, but it offers continuity for the utility and continuation uh for the city, um, and we'll have a discussion on that at our next city council meeting. I think uh what is shown here are real raw dollars of normal budgeting um that are, that go on every year for the Spock pilot, right?
Yeah, I I I mean, if I, if you want me to quantify, I think um with the EDA, you're probably right around two hundred to about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of additional revenue. For this one, I would, it would be more like a hundred thousand compared to what I, the number I actually have in there.
Okay.
And we will be bringing that back at the next meeting, Mr. Mayor. The original intent was to bring it tonight, but Mr. Reynolds really wanted to speak to that, so we will be bringing it back to the next meeting.
And Mayor, if I might, just to, just to make sure I understand and the public understands, the the pilot dollars are, and maybe Counselor Brennan can correct me, she's on that, sits on that board. They're based on total volume of sales of electricity and water, right? So, it depends what's actually utilized, and then a calculation goes into that, that's how you come to the number. So, that number can fluctuate if it's really hot and everybody's using a lot of water or if uh, you know, whatever changes, you know, a lot of air conditioning used, really hot or something. So, that number is kind of a placeholder, and the actual numbers are are based on something solid, uh, the actual uses. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, um, um, and we try to estimate that as best we can every year into our budget like we are doing here. Um, there is gonna be a slight change to the pilot uh percentages, but it's gonna be more grounded, more sure, and uh I think it's a win-win for the local utility as well as the city, and it shows a strong partnership versus where we were a couple of years ago. Counsel Leighton, or Counsel Whiting?
Uh, just to, you know, we throw these acronyms around and we talk about the pilot, and that's a payment in lieu of taxes that uh is of a fee the city charges the utility uh as a group of the city. Is that appropriate explanation? Okay.
More questions on that, Counsel Brennan?
Um, I don't have any more questions now.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much for your presentation. If there's no other questions of staff, this is a public hearing. If anybody resident would like to come forward and make comment on the proposed twenty twenty-two budget uh tax levy? This is a good time to voice if you'd like to come forward and make comment.
Mr. Little Hogway's gonna bring his statement up there for a second.
Okay, Counsel Lehman?
May I make a motion to close public hearing?
A second.
I have a motion and a second to close a public hearing. Uh, Counsel Brennan, second of that. Um, further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much. Let's move ahead to the public hearing for a currency exchange license for Exelpon. Counsel Lehman?
May I make a motion to open a public hearing?
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Counsel Brennan to open the public hearing. The public hearing is now open, and our city clerk will present.
Let's vote on this motion. Mayor, let's vote on this motion. We have a motion to.
And a second on the table, no further discussion. All in, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Well, thank you very much. Now, we can move ahead to eight B, the currency exchange license uh for Exel. Uh, Laurie will present.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. This is a public hearing for a currency exchange license for Exelpon. This is an annual process. Um, this is a license that is handled by the state. Um, Exelpon um does exert uh a currency exchange, um, cashing checks for people in our community. Um, they've already gone through the background check and um with the state, and this is just a pass-through um for us as a community and as a council. So, um, we generally have to hold a public hearing to allow anybody in the public, if they've had an issue with this business, um, with cashing their checks. Um, or if we, as a city, have had any issues with this business. Um, I did speak with the chief, um, of, uh, you know, Jeff Tate, uh, to see if we had had any issues, and there has not been any issues with this business. And so, um, just leave it to you. Um, and I have not had any electronic communications with anybody um about concerns with this business, so.
Thank you very much. Is there questions of staff? My question is, this is a, this happens once a year.
Yes.
And we've seen this business before.
Multiple times, yep. They've had a currency exchange license um at least ten years, if not more.
And in the last many years, there has never been an issue.
No, never have been an issue.
Very good. Other questions of staff? Other questions of staff? If not, thank you. Or Counsel Condras?
I was just gonna make a motion to, oh, sorry, go ahead.
So, this is a public hearing, and if anybody would like to come forward and speak on this application, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and happy holidays and welcome. Counsel Condras?
Make a motion to close a public hearing.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to close a public hearing from Counsel Brennan. Uh, further discussion, discussion, discussion. Uh, by voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much. Counsel Lehman?
Mayor, I'll offer a resolution, our twenty twenty-one dash one seventy-one approving the application of Exelpon Inc., DBA, Exelpon and jury, move its adoption.
A second.
I have a motion and a second by Counsel Brennan. Further discussion on the motion? Further discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, now I'd like to have a motion to recess to our EDA authority.
Make a motion to recess to the EDA.
A motion and a second by Counsel Lehman. Further discussion, discussion, discussion by voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. We are in recess for the EDA. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I call to order the December seventh Shakopee Economic Development Authority meeting. Um, and number one is roll call. If um staff couldn't mark role, please. All five of us are present tonight, hey! Um, number two is approval of the agenda. Is there any, Mr. Mars?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as stated. Second.
Uh, there's been a motion and a second by Whiting to approve the agenda. All of those in favor, please say aye. Uh, there's been a motion and a second by Whiting to approve the agenda. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion passes. Number three is the consent business. And on the consent business, there are three items. There is, um, the EDA minutes, the amended, um, TIF cooperative agreement, and the interfund loan resolution for TIF number seventeen.
Make a motion to approve consent, um, business?
There's been a motion to approve. Um, Mr. Lehman seconds?
Um, removing, oh, three B and three C.
Okay. There's been a request to remove item three B and three C. Are you, is that okay?
Approve modified.
Okay. There's been a motion to approve the modified consent business, which is the EDA business or EDA minutes. Um, is there a second to that?
Second.
Seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. Motion passes five to zero. Um, number three B is the amended TIF cooperative agreement. Uh, Mr. Lehman?
Yeah, I voted against it in the, uh, council meeting, so I wanted to be consistent, so.
Questions? Okay. Mr. Whiting?
Uh, I'd like to adopt resolution number E two zero two one dash one one, a resolution approving an amendment restated tax increment cooperative agreement relating to tax increment financing district number seventeen.
There's been a motion and a second by Mars. Um, is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay.
Aye.
Um, motion passes four to one. Uh, number three C is the interfund loan resolution for TIF number seventeen. Uh, Mr. Lehman?
I'm looking for it. I don't know that I actually found this one. Can somebody explain what it is we're doing?
Um, Mr.?
I don't know that I, I don't have this number in my packet.
Let's take a minute here.
Would be page thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Madam Chair, if I could just, uh, try and. This is the reimbursement of the consultant time and staff time for, for the, coming out of the, being paid out of the TIF district that we re, we created those funds from.
Do you have any other comments to that, Mr. Reinhardt?
Um, yeah, uh, President and, and Commissioners, uh, it is related to the previous, um, uh, cooperative agreement amendment. Uh, this would allow us, if we have expenditures prior to receiving the tax increment fund. So if we, uh, incur consulting costs or, um, professional services costs, that allows us to reimburse us with, reimburse those costs with future tax increment revenues outside, out of that district.
Retroactively.
Um, it, it, it only applies moving forward, once you adopt it. But it would apply, so if I incurred a cost after you adopted it tonight, um, that I could then retroactively apply increment costs in the future to those costs as we move forward.
Would, would that be above the ten percent?
Nope, it would come out of that ten percent. So it would have to come out of that, that ten, annual ten percent that would be approved with a cooperative agreement.
All right, so it's just above and beyond the general administrative cost? So if you had general administrative cost of, let's say, six percent, but you had adminis, some consultant fee or something, you could capture that from the six percent up to the ten percent?
Um, I, I'm not sure if I, I follow that correctly, but I'll, I'll just try to, try to explain it kind of my own way. Um, so with, with the tax increment funds, they're really strict on, um, making sure you have this reimbursement resolution in place so that if you expend, because you, it's an annual amount that you get out of that admin percent. So if I were to spend, let's say, twenty percent of admin costs this year, it would allow next year that I could take the next year's ten percent and apply it towards this. Not that that would necessarily happen, but it really just crosses your t's and dots your i's in, in the eyes of the state that may review an agreement like this.
Starting in May, or by the time June or July, when we collect the first half, you now have a resolution in place and you'll be able to hold that small percentage back, right?
That is correct.
Okay, got it.
Is there any other questions? Uh, Ms. Contreras?
I'd like to make a motion, um, to approve resolution number E twenty twenty-one dash zero one two to allow, allows for the reimbursement for possible TIF funds for staff and consultant time for administering the TIF district.
There's been a motion and a second by Whiting. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those against?
Aye.
Passes four to one. Um, next on the agenda is the twenty twenty-two EDA, uh, special benefits levy and budget. Mr. Reinhardt?
Uh, good evening again. Um, I just have a, a couple of slides on here. This is all information that you've, um, seen at this level before. Um, I'll just run through a couple of slides here quick. Um, so tonight we're asking for, uh, EDA consideration of the preliminary twenty twenty, or the, I should say, the final twenty twenty-two EDA tax levy. Uh, there's no changes from the preliminary levy that was set in September. Uh, if approved by the EDA tonight, it'll go to the council on September twenty-first, uh, for approval. Uh, the EDA, um, levy is subject to a limit of, uh, point zero one eight five percent of the city's estimated market value. Uh, that cap for twenty twenty-two is a million twenty-four thousand. Uh, so the levy proposed tonight is well within that limit. Uh, the, the EDA levy, uh, is applied to all taxable properties within the city, including properties that are currently in, uh, tax abatement or a TIF plan. Uh, the EDA levy is also identified separately on the property tax statements. Uh, the EDA levy is specifically, uh, designated for economic development activities and any funds unspent at year end would remain, uh, in that fund for purposes, um, as we move forward. Uh, the EDA levy, um, has been the same amount since, uh, twenty eighteen. Uh, for twenty twenty-two, staff is recommending an increase of a hundred and fifty thousand from three hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred thousand. Uh, the additional funding would, uh, would provide for, uh, increasing operational costs over that time period, uh, primary personnel, uh, additional professional services and the flexibility for, uh, economic development opportunities that may arise. Uh, for the medium value home, uh, the annual property taxes amount, amounted to about fifteen dollars in twenty twenty-one. Uh, if approved, uh, the five hundred thousand, uh, would amount to a twenty, twenty-two dollar, um, property tax amount on that home, which is a seven dollar annual increase. Um, I can, uh, answer any questions that you, uh, may have. Otherwise, um, you can consider the resolution.
Mr. Mars?
Uh, Madam Chair, so, um, for the special levy on budget for the EDA, um, the money that, or the amendments in the interfund loan resolution that we previously passed, is that built into the two thousand twenty-two EDA, uh, proposed budget?
Um, to add some clarification, so it would be admin costs incurred moving forward. And it would have to be costs that would apply to that district. So, um, we'd have to have documentation and we'd have to have support that shows that it was applied to that, um, that specific TIF. But those reimbursement dollars, if it's EDA staff time, it would flow back into the EDA. So, um, we have not, um, we have not added any additional dollars coming in, in for that, but.
And obviously the same question, uh, came up about the, Madam Chair, about the general levy in the presentation that, uh, the part of the pilot, the EDA will be getting some dollars. Um, but that hasn't been approved yet either and is not factored into the budget.
Yeah, Commissioner Mars, um, so with that, I think we've looked at it, that as, um, that'll be a, a significant dollar amount. Um, we've looked at, um, you know, the EDA is almost, the levy you're approving tonight is almost operational. That would be built more towards, you know, special projects that may come up. And I don't know if it's been determined as to how that money will be utilized. Um, so, correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Lehman?
Madam Chair, there's two items in my EDA packet that I don't have, and this is one. Although I, to me, the change is the additional one fifty, basically, um, raising the EDA levy amount for an additional hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It just seems to me that we, we're charging our, our residential constituents. We're taxing them by force for economic development to give businesses or apartment buildings tax-free status. Uh, and they also don't then put money into the general fund to pay for services, yet they're still receiving these services. You know, I, when I look at it just basically, it's like, okay, so we're going to give a deal to this apartment building that isn't built yet for people that don't, don't live here yet at the expense of the constituents we're supposed to be serving now. So, it's kind of crazy to me.
Right. Madam Chair?
Mr. Mars?
Uh, Counselor Lehman, the, I don't think we've given a developer a dollar. We've paid for infrastructure. But, uh, in our tax increment financing, I don't believe any dollars have gone directly.
Pollution.
Well, we, we know that's not true, Mr. Mayor. What happens is th- the money generated that property taxes on that structure that they build then comes to us and we turn around and pay back for that infrastructure. So they don't pay like a regular household that's property taxes, come into the city, go into the general fund and pay for services.
Interesting way you look at things.
Yeah, I, I think about the fact that, that property would not generate any taxes if nothing had been built on it.
And the farmer's field needs no services other than the farmer planting.
Okay, is there any?
Farmer's field had pollution in it too.
Is there any other, uh, comments, Mr. Whiting?
No, I have no comments, but I would make a motion to adopt resolution number E twenty twenty-one dash zero zero nine and E twenty twenty-one dash zero one zero approving the twenty twenty-two EDA special benefit levy of five hundred thousand and twenty twenty-two budget respectively. Uh, and I will add that I think we're coming back with, uh, budget amendment if we want to, once the other things have been approved. Has that been discussed? Are we planning on padding this one?
Uh, to be determined. Um, ob- obviously the first step would be approval of that pilot fee and then, um, deciding how to best utilize those funds.
Okay. My motion can be outstated.
Mr. Mars?
Uh, I'll second that. That's a straight.
Straight as written.
Straight up, you were asking about some amendment. No, I'll second for the straight up.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to adopt the, um, EDA special benefit levy of five hundred thousand in twenty twenty-two budget. Is there any other discussion?
That would be the time to discuss whether we bring that back, uh, or we would bring that back at a future point to adjust or at least discuss it if it gets passed.
That, that is correct. Is there any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
So the motion passes four to one. Next on the agenda is the EDA bill list. Um, was there any questions regarding the bill list? There's no questions. Um, we'll move on to adjournment. Mr. Mars?
Madam Chair, I'll offer a motion to adjourn the city, uh, City of Shockpi, uh, EDA till January fourth of twenty twenty-two at seven P M.
All right, there's been a motion.
Second.
And a second by Contreras. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes five to zero.
We'll reconvene the City of Shockpi City Council meeting for December tenth, or seventh, two thousand twenty-one, excuse me. And with that, we would move ahead then, or we just completed our EDA meeting. And eleven A one, which is an update from Union Pacific Railroad, running through our community with pride. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Steve? Okay. Good evening and welcome.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Lisa Stark. I'm Assistant Vice President of Public Affairs for Union Pacific Railroad. And just want to let you know, we're very, um, happy to be here tonight. We are here to give you an update predominantly focused on safety of the railroad, how we inspect our tracks, how we ensure that the trains running, running on those tracks move as safely and efficiently as possible. Um, we will also have a presentation that focuses on our hazardous materials management program, which is really how Union Pacific engages with the communities that we run through to prepare for an incident should, should one occur and so that we can recover as quickly as possible from that, both for the community's sake as well as the railroad's sake. So I just want to introduce who we have us, with us here tonight. We have Derek Chapin, who is our Superintendent of Operations. He's actually going to be moving new to the area. But, um, so we, we call it, it's kind of his railroad. We also have Ma- Matt Reichenberg, who will speak to you tonight about our track maintenance program. He is our Director of Track Maintenance and specifically covers this area. We also have Joe Eikton, who is our Manager of Hazardous Materials, who will specifically talk about the work that he does in the community here and with other communities where Union Pacific runs. And then we have Kelly O'Brien, who is our Senior Director of Public Affairs, and this is part of her territory as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Matt, and then we'll certainly be available, uh, to answer questions for you at the end as well.
Great, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you guys. Thanks for having us. Again, my name's Matt Reichenberg, Director for the area. So, kind of look at these slides here. This kind of goes into talking about our whole infrastructure that runs through the community, uh, what we do as far as inspection, safety and, and just overall infrastructure and how we look at that as a track renewal, uh, perspective. But, uh, start off, we have track inspectors in the area that are actually, their jo, their sole jobs are to inspect the track within the community. Uh, the main lines that run through here, they do that every week. Um, when they do their inspections, it's, um, normally on a high rail or high, walking, uh, off a high rail, so you probably see some local trucks that come through the community. Um, but they, they traverse the track through here, um, twice a week, at least three kilometer days in between. Um, all the switches, so a switch would be something to take you from one track to another. Where industrials like ours out here in some of our sightings, uh, they do those, uh, on foot every month. Then outside of that, uh, if you want to go to the next slide there, if you would, please, Steve. Um, I don't know if you've seen these, uh, back in October, we normally run this as our, we got an EC four and EC five. So these are, um, what we call our geometry, um, cars, so it's just like a train. Uh, we actually pull these through our full network of thirty-two thousand track miles that U P covers within the United States. And, uh, we cover it twice a year, twice annually. And, uh, these measure gauge, uh, with lasers, uh, takes actual high vis imaging in real time as it goes. And also takes, uh, account graphs, all the geo, geometry measurements, uh, do, um, if we got any obstructions and stuff like that on traffic that we move up and down our tracks. Does all that real time and, uh, we can run that up to about seventy miles an hour as we do our inspections. We use this a lot of times to collect data to see, um, for like curb designs and track speed. Show them cheese on this and also points out different things. Or like longevity of our track, different things that we can change within our infrastructure. And, and different ways we can actually move our, our freight and, uh, do it safely. Go to the next slide. These are, uh, AT G M S, so it looks just like a normal maybe box car that goes through the community on manifest somewhere or a locomotive. Uh, we do have some of these. But anyways, uh, these have a lot of the same, uh, technological advances as what like that EC pipe imaging was on there. Um, but their sensors are actually built on the, the frame structure itself and it has, um, computers inside it, so real time. These are just, uh, anonymously in our fleets and they run throughout the infrastructure too. So if it goes across, it's continually marked on our track and the structure as well, and it reports in lifetime. So if it picks up something, um, say there's like a soft spot in the track or something, geometry, that would, um, be deemed critical that somebody need to go out there, say it's running the middle of the night or something of that nature. It'll actually call in and dial up the track manager in that area and, uh, send somebody out to actually go inspect the track. Um, this is our, what we call a D C or detector car. I use ultrasonic sound. Um, through, uh, a car in the back that's, uh, called R S U wheels. And actually you can see internal imaging for any internal rail or stolen infrastructure defects that a human eye can't see. So look at those to help mitigate broken rail type derailments and things of that nature. Uh, we run this, uh, annually across our fleet as well too. Um, they also have, uh, other areas, um, like retesting if we get a broken rail somewhere um, due to an impact somewhere in a wheel set or something that's failed, broken and breaks the rail. They can actually retest with, um, what they call walking sticks. So it's just literally a hand stick that does the same thing. It'll computer read the internal, um, rail, make sure there's no defects in that. Go to the next one. And then special inspections, this kind of groups, um, all in from where it's us on the transportation side. Um, H D C, which, um, runs all of our infrastructure of, of our trains, um, dispatching them from point A to point B. If it happens to be a flash flood, an earthquake, um, could be a, maybe a wildfire of some sort. We've had some of those la, out on the West Coast, uh, here this last year. But if there's anything that comes in, in warnings, it could be a tornado warning, say, or high wind warnings. Uh, we have different detectors along our, our infrastructure and we work with that and. And, um, national weather, uh, like NOLA and stuff, and we actually get notifications. So that either may restrict us to run a, a train or maybe hold it out due to winds or an impact somewhere. And then, uh, also triggers them to notify us directly or my frontline personnel directly to go out and actually, um, high rail traverse the area to make sure we don't have any impact, impacts or wash out somewhere along our infrastructure. And that's kind of, uh, this part goes into emergency response. I'm going to hand this over to Mr. Eikton.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council members for having us. Uh, my name is Joe Eikton, I'm the Emergency Response Hazardous Materials Manager for Minnesota for Union Pacific Railroad. Uh, just briefly, uh, our mission is trying to prevent incidents from happening uh, and making sure our communities are prepared as far as fire department law, EMS. Uh, on that note, I was out in our Valley Park yard last Monday night with a forty man crew from the Shakopee Fire Department working with Assistant Chief Ryan Yentress. Uh, we were able to climb on some locomotives, talk about those, a tank car we had, uh, set out down there and show the guys, uh, it's kind of a beginner's introduction to how you would respond to an incident involving, uh, something in a rail yard or with a tank car or locomotive. But it was very good, they're looking forward to doing something, uh, next year and exercising the yard. Uh, so that was good, uh, very good outreach. And then preparedness, uh, that's part of the preparedness program. And then response and recovery is, is once an incident has occurred, a derailment or a release of fuel from a locomotive, something like that, then our team responds. In fact, I just received a call that, uh, I'll have to respond to here as soon as we're done. Uh, but that happens all the time. The most important thing is, uh, pre-planning, uh, and we talked with the railroad during the training about how to contact us. Uh, it's real simple too, and I'll tell everybody here that at every crossing in town, there's a little blue sign. And that gives you the owner of the railroad, the phone number to call and the precise crossing number. So if train traffic needed to be stopped, just like that, anybody can call that number and request train traffic to be stopped. I also gave, uh, the department, um, a bunch of stickers with our emergency response number on it that they're going to put in their vehicles. So they'll have those right there, they don't even have to go to a sign, they'll have them right with them in the vehicle. Uh, we also talked about what assets will bring to an incident. Uh, no matter where I go, train, fire departments, one of the first things I ask is how many people in this room have been to a rail incident? And you might get one or two or three hands up. And when you ask how many have been to a major rail incident, everybody's hands goes down because it's pretty rare that that happens. But they do happen. What I tell them is we prefer, uh, we work with NIMs, if, if anybody's familiar with, uh, Incident Command. Uh, we prefer to work in a unified command. Uh, the local fire department will always be Incident Command until they want to give the, uh, incident back to us. Once the emergency's over, uh, then it becomes a, uh, recovery where things are going to be fixed and restoration. And then next slide, please, that's pretty much that. Uh, I, I just put this in there because our message is for everyone. Um, you don't like to meet somebody for the first time at three in the morning on a winter night at a derailment. That's why we go out and do community outreach and train fire departments, EMS, law enforcement. And we also invite council members, mayors, uh, anybody that would like to come, city attorneys, administrators, uh, that would just like to gather some information. Uh, so the next time we do that, and I, I asked Chief Yentress, uh, to, to put, you know, even neighboring communities that work, uh, uh, they work together, uh, the more we can get and train, the better. Next slide, please. Uh, my group is broken down into those four disciplines, prevention, trying to prevent the releases. Uh, for tho- those of you that don't, probably don't know, most people don't, the railroad does not own tank cars. Uh, what the rail, or railroad owns is the track and the locomotives for the most part. We do own some boxcars, we do own a very small number of tank cars to move fuel around our system. But it's the shipper's responsibility. Uh, so we train the fire departments on that, that the first call you want to make is talk to the conductor, get ahold of me and we'll get ahold of the shipper. The shipper's the expert, it's their responsibility to secure the car, to placard the car, to make sure the manifest and all the paperwork is correct. We check them, I'm out every day inspecting cars and rail yards and inspecting trains and, and crews, uh, trying to make sure our shippers comply with the, the laws of the Federal Railroad Association. And then again, once the incident has happened, it, it's a response, we work hand in hand. The first call I'm going to make is to the fire chief or whoever is on scene in charge. Uh, I, I would be talking to them within minutes of an incident, uh, and letting them know what we're bringing, what they could do, who they may need, may need to talk to. We do have many local employees that work in the Valley Park yard who would respond to an incident in town within minutes. Uh, sometimes myself and our contractors, it may take an hour or two to get everything we need there. But we're in constant communication with local responders. And then recovery again is just, uh, restoration, site remediation. Next slide, please. Uh, there again, for the prevention is the most important part, we're trying to prevent incidents from happening. Uh, just as Matt talked about inspecting track, we go out and inspect tank cars, we inspect trains, we audit our own crews. Make sure they have the paperwork right, make sure the cars are placed in the train right. Certain cars cannot go next to other cars. As an example, a flat car carrying banded pipe cannot go next to a tank car for obvious reasons. I mean, those pipes just become arrows if an incident were to happen. So we check that and make sure everything's proper and everything's placarded right. Again, if we do run into a problem with a car, we're going to stop the train, get ahold of the shipper. Now, I will come out and secure whatever's not secured or put a placard in so we can keep the train moving. But I do contact the shipper right away and rest assured, they will be getting an assessorial fee from the railroad for doing that and, and taking care of their problem. We also train our own employees and shippers, I'll go out and visit shippers, uh, those who ship hazardous materials, uh, in the area and train them. And then we, uh, we are members of, uh, many industry committees, uh, Transcare, maybe some people have heard of Transcare, Chlor rep, uh, associations like that to try and make, uh, rail transportation safer. And, uh, then we're also trying to improve, if so, if some of you heard in the last few years, tank cars. They're making them thicker, they're making them stronger. A lot of that came out of when the Bakken crude oil started being shipped, uh, by rail more, more and more. Uh, they wanted, there were some derailments involving crude oil, if you've heard about them, and they, they have happened. So they designed the new one seventeen tank car to be stronger, thicker, stronger, a little bit more robust, uh, which is always a good thing. Next slide. Preparedness again, uh, hazardous materials emergency response plan, community right to know and open ninety. We tell the fire department what is shipping through your community every year. Doesn't change that much, the top ten hazardous materials that come through the community remain pretty much the same year after year. They don't change that much. And when people ask me what comes through your community, the answer is pretty standard, a, a little bit of everything. You know, uh, ethanol, uh, chlorine, uh, you know, every city uses chlorine, water, uh, treatment plants, uh, and hydro ammonia. We got a lot of farmers up here, they use that, that comes through town, uh, along with all your fuels and oils and things like that in tank cars. Uh, again, we do a lot of training, uh, we want to train as many responders as we can. Uh, drills and exercises, I'm looking forward to holding one here next year, uh, with your city and, and responders, fire department, uh, law enforcement and EMS. We, we like to try and get them all involved because when an incident does occur, th- they're, they're all involved. And they need to know how to talk to us, who you're going to talk, what we're going to bring, what you're going to bring, what you, what they can do to help your community. You know, I tell them that first half hour or hour of an incident, it's kind of on them. Uh, they're the first ones there and, and for a while, they're the only ones there. We don't look for offensive maneuvers, uh, really, but we look for defensive maneuvers from, to, to protect your community. You know, and things we talk about are things like, uh, if, if a tank car was punctured and you've got ethanol coming out of the tank car and you've got a creek or a river or school, a nursing home nearby, what can you do to prevent that? You know, know where you can get trucks, know where you can get loads of sand, know where you can get, you know, have spill kits, uh, at your shop that you can use if you need to, things like that. Uh, until all the resources we need get there, because they don't get there like that. You know, we all wish they would, but it takes hours for people to get to a shop, load up, get all the equipment, get on the road. Uh, so there are a lot of things that we try and help the community with what they can do to, in, in the event of a. And then again, the commodity flow, we like to let, that's not information we want spread around. Uh, they literally pretty much have to sign that they're not going to spread that around, that that's in-house information on what commodities are, for obvious reasons, uh, what commodities come through town. And that's my presentation, any questions?
Great, uh, thank you very much.
Okay.
Questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and I were, uh, with you folks at a meeting. Good meeting, appreciate you coming by. Um, questions that I wrote down to your presentation, so I don't know who the expert is to ask, but.
Right.
Southern Minnesota, there's talk of, uh, a crossing may have caused a derailment. Um, don't know if that's true or not.
You know what?
How do we, uh, you know, and then I have another note about rough crossings, possible crossings causing derailments. So I didn't hear anything about through your inspection process of inspecting crossings, whether it's the arms operational, uh, maintenance or the actual roughness of a crossing or if the crossing itself could cause a derailment. And I, and I thought I read that the one down by Fairmont was, uh, a newer concrete crossing? Can anybody speak to your inspection process on crossings?
Well, crossings are inspected each, each month themselves, but, uh, we do an annual focus inspection on those and signal actually as far as apparatus, so whether it's gate with flashes or signal arms, those are tested. And they all have these links, so they do have, by the way, right, they have to test this monthly. Those are tested, we do have counters within, you know, structures for appearances and different things.
You're a bigger guy, can you speak up just a little bit so we can all hear you?
Go to the microphone. Thank you.
Sorry to put you on the spot, I just.
No, hey, that's fine. Um, so yeah, they, they are inspected monthly, um, on the signal side for anything that's a signaled apparatus. Um, those and all the clearance, so they got to go and actually do tests and make sure the gates fall within a certain amount of time. It's all mandatory, um, and regulated through the F R A.
And are, are they monitored off-site computer networks, whatever, to, to, if they're actually functioning? Or is it only hands-on or call-in if it's not working?
It's kind of a combination of all three. So we do have some locations that, uh, our network to where if there's, uh, interruption somewhere in the circuitry, it, it can report that directly to H D C and our dispatching center, which can also protect it. Um, and then some of the other stuff, if it wasn't operating as intended, it'd be from somebody calling in off one of those blue signs like Joe was saying, which is an E N S sign, saying, hey, I've been sitting here, I don't see anything, but they're just down flashing, I don't know what's going on.
Okay. And then, uh, the, the, there's a lot of talk about the rail inspection, um, and your equipment ins- inspections, but I heard that the, most of the rail cars are owned by the shippers. So who's responsible for the inspection on the shipper's rail cars?
Uh, the shippers themselves, uh, they have, uh. Yeah, the shippers have, uh, strict rules, regulations, laws they have to follow on securing a tank car. Just to give you an example, uh, a tank car, standard tank car has eight manway bolts that hold that manway secure. If I climb that car during inspection in the Valley Park yard and find all eight bolts less than tool tight, uh, I call the shipper immediately, I secure the car, tell them I got to take pictures, document everything, put our seal on, take their seal off, take pictures, and then they will get assessed five hundred dollars per bolt. Uh, and, and then if a valve is open, that's another five hundred. Uh, and they pay for my time to do that. I go out and inspect the cars, the F R A has inspectors that go out and inspect the cars. The state of Minnesota has two inspectors that go out and inspect the cars. We all work together. They will call me, hey, I found some cars down in St. Paul yard, uh, a couple of loose valves. Okay, I'm on my way, I'll secure them, I'll call the shipper, I'll take care of it, they do their payment. And the F R A will find them as well for that.
I would imagine that the shipper, if their car causes a derailment with damages, that they're probably liable maybe?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's a good ince- that's a good incentive for them to make sure they're maintaining their stuff.
Now, the problem is, you know, your smaller, average shippers, yes, that's a big incentive. To mobile oil, I don't know how much of an incentive that is.
Right.
Uh, they, they ship a lot of cars, a lot of product.
You know, and I, when you watch a train going down the track and you see the one that's going clickety-clack, 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 and the rest aren't, you wonder why, what's up with that one car? You know, and, and most people assume, well, it's the railroad's car, but you're telling me it's probably the shipper's car, um, which is good information to know. Um, as you're fully aware, we have some pretty tough crossings in Shakopee. And we have some rare situations where we have so many crossings in such a short.
You got a lot of cross.
Um, but them, them crossings don't seem to get as hammered as some of the more used crossings. The one by your switching station is terrible, I went across that one not too long ago and, uh, yeah, that, uh, that'll take a little car and pretty much you, you lose it, it's down in a hole.
Yeah.
So we've got to do better, you know, and, and I said this to you folks at the meeting. It's just my perception, but when the general public sees a railroad crossing in really bad shape, they assume that maybe the rail is equally as bad as the crossing. And that's not, it's not an ac- I, I, that's an accurate statement from the perception side of somebody unknowingly, right?
Sure.
Um, but it's not necessarily true comparison from the inspection on the rail itself.
Right.
And the safety of the rail itself compared to the car crossing.
Right.
Uh, the bump is inconvenience on a car.
Yeah.
Not necessarily safe of a train. Yes?
If I might add to, I think I worked recently with Steve, um, Beans, uh, the manager that was in this area, it's been a long while. So the, uh, when, our recent manager that was actually over there, he has been recently replaced with N U P, covered through your, your area here, um, obviously works underneath me, but I've been working with Steve here recently. And I think there was, uh, four crossings that were, that had come up and those all have been completely replaced. So hopefully those are in better shape. I, I drove through here personally myself this last week and looked at them.
Good news, you need to go drive across stagecoach.
Yep.
It's, uh, vastly improved, uh, thank you, um.
And I just had one more, uh, comment, Mayor. Um, the Shakopee track, uh, and I might get some of these numbers mixed up, but my understanding is a few years back, they went to, is it thirty-three pound per inch or something? And it's the welded track, not the rails where, when we were kids, you had a chunk of rail and then you had a break and then a chunk and then a break. So this is one solid rail, um, and the thirty, I don't know where the thirty-three pound per something came up, somebody told.
Yeah, they, that's what we, that's what we consider, uh, your rail size is normally based upon weight. So say you had like eighty pound or ninety pound rail, uh, be that pound per every three linear feet or per yard of, of, uh, track.
And what do we have here?
So a lot of the stuff that's come through town, we used to have joint track here, that was probably just before my time we came up here. And now we run what they considered, uh, C W R continuously welded rail. And so we got rid of a lot of the jointed rail, some of our sightings and stuff in the area still do in our industry tracks, but the main line is C W R now.
And where does that rank on the various rails that you operate? I heard a number of thirty-three pound and I'm not sure what that means.
I, no, there's, I mean, there's different size, but everything that we have through here that can run all of our, our heaviest of infrastructure as far as commodities across the track.
Okay. And the welding process is really cool, I saw, I saw it on T V.
So there's in, there's in-track welding and thermite welding, there's still, um, we, we plume the rail and basically induct it back together in one solid piece, but yeah, it is kind of a work of art.
Yeah, I saw it on T V, it was pretty cool.
Let's see if I can get these guys to switch seats again.
Absolutely.
I, I want to talk about the training of the firefighters, I want to thank you for being part of that and getting our firefighters involved in that. But we also have a, a Scott County, uh, Association of Leadership that is a group of many communities and we have a training facility as well. And I wonder if there's any, uh, assets available to maybe, uh, work with that group to have. And I wonder if there's any assets available to maybe work with that group to have some sort of training opportunity for our firefighters and other firefighters in the county.
Yeah, we certainly could. We are required by state law to send invitations to do training to every community or county within five miles of our main line. You would be surprised how few responses we get. We do get some. To be very honest, towns like Shakopee, not in a heavy metro area, are much better, much more welcoming to training. Seems the smaller the town you get out in the country, they're more receptive. They want that. They want you to come out. And then they'll have a barbecue with corn and the cob after the training. And it's great. It really is. Where sometimes in the cities, it's not that way. They get a little...
On their training night, it's gonna be a hard thing.
Yeah, and we do. I mean, we'll come out Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
Well, the training facility that we have is actually right along the rails, so...
Right. I know right where it is.
Okay. It might be an opportunity to put something in more permanent, if that's something you guys do for the community, so you're not having to do these, moving them around and things. Just a thought.
Yeah, and I would, again, I mean, we send our invitations out early in the year, so we'll be sending them out again, and I'll reach out to the county. Because I prefer getting county emergency management, you know, and county...
Mr. Lehman's on that committee. Maybe you can bring it to that board as a thought.
And the railroad committee, so...
Yep.
Good. I just want to say, yes, we did have a railroad subcommittee meet with the Union Pacific a couple months ago. I want to commend you on the response that we got based off that meeting. Couple of those crossings got fixed. Stagecoach, Appgar, Valley, the 101...
Scott and Valley Park Drive.
Thank you very much. It's nice to be heard. It's nice to be listened to. It's nice to see action. We're looking for a community partnership here. To tell me that you partnered with our fire department a week ago or two weeks ago, that's phenomenal. I... We build relationships, and that's what we want. You're in our community, you have a yard. I think that's great to partner in that. And we want to just have it continue and keep the dialogue as needed. You say things don't happen very often, very infrequently. That's great, right?
I always know.
But we gotta make sure that if does something happen, something does happen, that we can communicate and work together.
Mayor, if I might, and I brought this up at that meeting too, Mayor, that part of that partnership is to ask you experts, what do we do as a general public to help the railroad be successful and safe? One of the things I learned at that is our childhood, where we put the pennies on the track and get them flattened out, is not such a good idea. If it happens to get pinched off the track, it's like a bullet. So never thought of that as a kid, but good information. So my question to you is, what can our citizens do to help the railroad?
I would answer that directly by saying, stay off the tracks.
Stay off the tracks. Don't play on the railroad tracks. Don't lift stuff on the railroad tracks.
It's become very popular lately, family photos, high school graduation photos, people want to take it on a railroad track for some reason. And I've got a slide when I do my training with fire departments that shows a family on a set of rail tracks somewhere, and I said, don't do this. And let people in your community know to not do that. Let the schools know to not do that.
And the railroad isn't an artistic class either, right?
What's that?
It's not an artistic class either.
No, no. No, it's just, you know, people like to go out and take pictures and walk on the bridge. And the other sad thing that's become too common is suicide by train. We've had a number of those recently. I had two of them last weekend. Those are not the kind of responses you want to go to, to be honest.
Well, you don't want to... You don't want to race the train to a crossing.
No, no.
I think one of the things that we can tell the general public is, what's a railroad train weigh? I mean, it's not like the car that can stop in twenty feet.
It's over a mile to stop.
And it's because it weighs a lot.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, they're not gonna stop.
Well, I think one of the things that we can do to partner together to help the railroad is actually what came out of that meeting is, why don't you come before our city council and give a presentation?
Absolutely.
Here we are ninety days later, and you're doing it. So I think that's great, with some slides visible to our public. Steve?
I had one question. Part of the public outreach, education, making friends, this one component that a lot of people experience doesn't necessarily make friends, and that would be when they're waiting for a train.
Right.
Sometimes it gets excessive. So maybe directly from the railroad, you could give an idea of what the expectations are for the public roadway crossings of your railroad, what legally they are. And then we have a couple of private crossings, too, that... One by between Seventieth and Stagecoach, Excel Energy has a power plant to the south, and they can... They reported to me actually today in response to you being here. They reported that they can have sometimes with no embellishment, thirty-minute waits, up to a couple of hours wait, and I haven't been able to verify that. But maybe you could comment on the difference between public crossings, private crossings, and then the expectations?
Yeah, so the first thing I'd like to do is just let everybody know that there is a number at the railroad. Excuse me. To call if you experience what's a blocked crossing, which is essentially, as we define it, it's a train that is at a crossing that isn't moving. And it's in our best interest, it's in the public's best interest, it's in the community's best interest to have the trains moving. And we do understand that. We understand the frustration when a train is not moving. So we highly encourage those to be reported, whether that is a public crossing or a private crossing. A public crossing is defined essentially as a crossing that has a public roadway over the top of the railroad property, right? For the traveling public. A private crossing is defined as a crossing that does not have a public roadway, has a private roadway at the top. So generally, those are to access one or two properties, and those also don't show up in the state's inventory as a quote-unquote "public" crossing. So again, we can provide this city, if you want to post on your website, which would probably be if it's not already there, because I know we had provided a lot of links that you had graciously provided to your public, to make sure that that railroad crossing, blocked crossing number is actually on the website, so people can call that in. To answer your question about, you know, laws related to blocked crossings, we are heavily regulated at the federal level by the U.S. Department of Transportation and very specifically by the Federal Railroad Administration. There is no federal standard related to blocked crossings. We obviously, as I said, it is the best interest of the railroad and the public to keep those trains moving. I do want to raise the fact that there are a lot of reasons sometimes why a train might be blocking a crossing. One could be a mechanical issue, or you just... You can't move the train. Someone, I think Councilmember Lehman, you had raised the question about if you hear something happening with the rail cars that goes down the lines, you know, some sort of sound or something. We do have wayside, what we call wayside detectors, that are located every so many miles along our railroad, that actually take readings of the wheels on the cars as they travel, and those are real-time reports. So if we get anything that indicates that we should stop that train for every reason, we have to stop the train, and we will stop the train, and we will inspect it, because we don't want that train to continue on if we can... If that might lead to compromise of safety in any way. So unfortunately, that requires us to get off, walk the train, inspect the train, and make sure that we can get it moving again. Another reason sometimes that train traffic is impacted, or we might see more delays at some of the crossings, for example, if we're recovering from weather events. So if we have even, say, a large flood, or hurricanes tend to hit our southern states pretty frequently, it takes the railroad out in a lot of... It can in a lot of locations. And when that happens, we don't have a fluid network, because every part of our network depends on another part to keep everything running efficiently and seamlessly. So when we have an issue that's compromised in one area of the railroad because of a natural disaster or significant weather event, it does tend to have the backup trickle effect on the road, and it takes us a little bit to recover. So that can happen as well. But again, I... We absolutely encourage, if there are incidences where we have, you know, blocked crossings, to call that number in, because we do catalog those, we do track those. In fact, I get a report. I think our operations team probably gets the same report every morning from our dispatch, our Response Management Communication Center, that lists all the block crossing calls that we get, that come into the system, so that we can actually track those. We have data to see what's actually occurring there, because we do take reports by the reporting party. And then we can see, is this a one-off, or are there some operational changes that we may need to look at doing there?
What is the expectation, though? I know you brought up a lot of incidences and things that could delay that, but what is the rough normal standard?
I don't know that there's necessarily a rough normal standard. You know, the Federal Railroad Administration will kind of categorize things, so that you can also, the public can also report to the Federal Railroad Administration, and you can have a time for, you know, from zero to ten minutes, ten to thirty minutes, thirty to sixty minutes, sixty to one hundred and twenty at least. That's how we catalog it, when the reporting party calls in, so that we, again, can see what may actually be occurring there.
Steve, did you follow up?
Well, my follow-up would be, I mean, exactly that. That doesn't give the community much as far as what their expectation should be, and then they call me, and then they complain. So it would be good. My understanding was state statute said ten minutes. So if that's not correct, or you follow different guidelines, that would be good for us to know and communicate to the public, because we're not going to send a police officer and give the train a ticket. So it's difficult for the city, and we're in a tough position there.
Yeah, and I just, I can't reiterate enough that the railroad runs on data. Data drives everything we do, especially as it relates to safety. So when we have those crossings that get called in, again, we are monitoring those all the time. In fact, we have an initiative that the railroad's working on right now, where we've identified the top twenty-five crossings on our system that are blocked on a more, I wouldn't say a regular basis, but with greater frequency. And we are analyzing those, determining what's happening there, and trying to mitigate that impact to the public. So again, any information that we get into the system, it helps us out a whole bunch. Why have not... I will tell you, I have not seen a lot of reports from Shakopee lately.
Is there a ten-minute standard for the state, or no?
I don't know if the state has a ten-minute standard, but again, we are federally... The movement of trains is really regulated at the federal level. And again, there's no standard at the federal level related to that.
Yeah, I think that for the most part, coming through our community, it's generally pretty good. I think by your switching yard, out by Stagecoach, as we're backing up and trying to stack up the cars, and I, you know, I get that part. Also over by RAR, if you have a... You're gonna detach and then back up and then re, whatever you do over there.
And honk the horn all night. And honk the horn all night, yeah.
So also, we talked, I've been working, and the 101 crossing by Valley Fair was brought up, and the last two meetings I met with the county, that crosses a county road, and they would really like to be engaged and try to find a solution that you guys can fix that crossing. And we talked about a full closure or partial and find a way. They're ready to talk and find a way.
We need to contact them.
Okay, good.
They need to contact Nick Schardt and help with Project Porto. We can work with you about that. That needs to be a contact from the county.
And then, thank you. Also, I think that the last time we talked, a couple of years ago, you had a derailment in our community on our east end, and we talked about it briefly at our meeting, and you said, oh, just go on the National Transportation Safety Board and type in Shakopee, and you can pull that report. And I've tried five times. I'm pretty techie, not real techie. I would love if Union Pacific could provide that report, that's now old, right, to me, to us.
Yeah, so it was the Federal Railroad Administration, that Union Pacific, that all the railroads report all of our data and incident data, too. So we can see if we can help you, to see if we can help you find that and get you the appropriate link.
Get that report and send it to me.
Yeah, it was out by North Star.
That's right, huh?
It was the one by North Star there, yep.
So...
The last thing I would say, Mayor? The last thing I would say is, if you think restocking and supply issues are bad with ships and loading docks, imagine without trains, because trains move a lot of product, a lot of product across the country. So I think, you know, it's important that we recognize the benefits of what rail does at the same time. You know, everything comes with pros and cons, and you've got, in order to weigh the cons, you have to weigh the pros with it. So I know that they move a ton of product, and they do it pretty efficiently, because they can go as crow flies in some cases. So I just wanted to throw that out there, that it's not all bad.
Very important to the commerce of America.
Absolutely.
And Union Pacific does a great job. We're glad you're in our community. I really, the meeting that we had and the outcomes, and this is part of one of the outcomes, I am very pleased. Thank you. Thanks for fixing the crossings. Thanks for opening the line of communications. Thanks for coming before us. Thanks for working on the relationship. That's important.
I can say something. You have three local people there, three really right here, so that's really important, that we have those lines of communication over. And I'm just a phone caller.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Anything else? Union Pacific, on behalf of the City of Shakopee, thank you very much.
Thank you. We really appreciate it.
All right. Is that a motion?
Motion for a short break.
Oh, I have a second. No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. We're on a six-minute break, eight-minute break. We're going to reconvene the City of Shakopee City Council meeting for December seventh, two thousand twenty-one. After our short break, we're going to hear a presentation on eleven eighty-two on our twenty-twenty-one, twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four strategic plan, communication plan. And Amanda will present, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, as Chelsea introduced me earlier, I'm Amanda McKnight. I'm the new Communications Manager. I started in August and of course, some of you know me from my past life, um, as a six-year Shakopee Valley News reporter. So I'm happy to be here in this new role. And, um, tonight I'm going to walk you through our three-year strategic communications plan. So first of all, um, I just want to talk a little bit about what a communications plan is and its purpose. Um, it will guide our organization in how we communicate with our audiences. This plan can define what messages our organization wants to share, how those messages should be conveyed, and the channels we want to use. Uh, the plan also tells us who we want to reach, what we want them to know, and how we plan to do that. So this plan in particular has been in the works for about a year. Our former com, Communications Manager, Kristin Doran, led a team of ten city staff members who collaborated to develop the plan, particularly our key messages and the new city tagline that you're all familiar with by now, innovating, entertaining, and thriving. These are some of the topics that are covered in the plan. Um, you have a PDF copy in your agenda packet. Uh, so we'll be walking through some of these tonight, uh, particularly the key messages, the goals and objectives, and the strategies for how we intend to meet our goals. One second. There we go. Okay, so, our brand. We want people to see Shakopee as a community that is innovating, entertaining, and thriving. This is what our branding team chose and council previously supported for our city tagline and the supporting messages. So between our vision, mission, and brand, this is kind of the foundation of the messaging we want to tell people about Shakopee. And as you can see, under each, um, portion of the tagline, we have some messaging about how we're a diverse, uh, community of innovative businesses and organizations, um, how we have a unique variety of options for entertainment in this River South community, and that we are a safe, diverse, welcoming, and growing community. It's important to identify target audiences because our content and the channels we use will differ based on who we're targeting. Using data from the twenty-eighteen community survey, these audiences were identified as feeling a disconnect with the city, which is of course, something that we don't want. We believe that they could benefit from more targeted communication efforts and we will use this plan to guide those efforts. So of course, all residents in our community are important and we want them all to get information, but especially the ones who may be feeling disconnected from the city or feeling like they're not getting the communication that they need. So, um, some of our target audiences include, um, Black Indigenous, people of color, non-English speakers, adults under the age of thirty-five, renters, residents with disabilities. And then of course, things like companies, contractors who do business here, entrepreneurs who might want to open a shop here. Um, the tens of thousands of people who visit our city every year for sports leagues and tournaments and things like that. We want to make sure that we're getting our message out to all these people. Our partners and other key influencers around Shakopee will continue to be integral to our communications approach. When trusted community members and organizations partner with us and co-brand with us and share our information, it instills confidence in our messaging. Because we can talk all day about how great we are at the city. We know we're great. But in order to build that trust, we need other people to be saying that we're great as well and to be willing to put their name and their logo next to ours. So this is a sampling of some of the communication channels we use to share, um, city information. I'm sure you're familiar with probably most of them. Which channel we use may depend on which audience we are targeting, how high priority or urgent the message is, and how timely it is. And this can, um, range from everything from a post on our Facebook page. Today I posted that the plows were out just so that folks know that, yes, my street will get plowed eventually. Um, the after-council report that goes on our website and goes out in email, hometown messenger four times a year. Um, a few times a year, we'll put a flyer into the utility bill. We just did that with the garbage hauler transition because that's a way that we can reach every resident guaranteed. So we have
Could utilize that more because it really goes to all residents once a month. I mean, hometown messenger and, uh, some people don't have the internet. But I always feel that Spuck Flyer would be a great opportunity for, and Spuck uses it as well. We should be using it in our new part, stronger partnership.
Absolutely, yeah. And it's good that they are a stronger partner now because that'll just, um, make things more efficient, hopefully. So these are the key messages that, uh, our branding team chose as the foundation for our communications initiatives. These are essentially an extension of our city values and they highlight the various reasons Shakopee is a place people and businesses want to be. Uh, some of these are a little bit redundant with the messaging that's under our innovating, entertaining, and thriving, but it all kind of has the same, uh, the same message, which is that we are a safe, diverse, growing, and economically strong community. We're a distinctive river town that honors its past while looking toward the future. Um, that's an easy one to back up with some of our projects going on with the Cultural Trail and whatnot right now. Um, the City of Shakopee plans and develops strategically to build a diverse and stable tax base, as evidenced by Nate's presentation earlier. And we are committed to maintaining a safe and sustainable community by delivering high-quality services and excellent customer service in a cost-effective manner. So, um, the plan's goals and objective are, to me, the meat of the plan, the thing I really care about because these are the things that I'm going to have to implement over the course of the next three years. And we're going to work to meet these goals and objectives in a meaningful way and be reporting back once a year on our progress. Uh, these objectives were pulled from recent guiding documents. So some of them may look familiar as you've seen them in the city's strategic plan, the twenty-forty comprehensive plan, and the Parks, Trails, and Recreation Master Plan. Our first goal is to get more audiences engaged in the decision-making process. Isn't that the dream? To have residents engaged and caring about their local government and what we're doing here at City Hall. So we hope to expand community engagement among all residents and partners. And we're going to do that by adopting a community engagement policy to guide all of our public engagement efforts. So, um, that'll be a policy that we can kind of use as almost like a communications plan for each of our different community engagement needs, whether it's we're reaching out because we want to know your thoughts on a new park or a new development, whatever it may be. We want to increase engagement with our targeted populations in particular since they're feeling disconnected from what we're doing here at City Hall. So we're hoping in the future to hold meetings and events off-site at various places in the community, hopefully in South Bridge at some point. Uh, we want to make sure and kind of bridge that gap between the downtown area and South Bridge. And of course, provide communication materials for non-English speaking populations because, um, right now, they don't have any city communications materials geared towards them. Yes, Counselor?
Mayor, the, uh, the third bullet point on more voices engaged in decision-making processes. When seeking engagement, offer multiple options for feedback. I want to highlight the senior population that is not real tech savvy and doing the internet and computers and stuff like that. And how do we get feedback from that targeted group?
Yeah, I think that's definitely something we want to look at. Um, you know, that's, I think, why things like the utility bill flyers and things like that are really great for that population. They are looking at their paper bills. They're probably reading it more closely than maybe somebody my age would be.
Right.
Um, how to get them to respond to us is trickier because a lot of the time, we're asking for those responses online. And so I think that part of that is just being very inclusive and plain language. Like, we're big on plain language at City Hall and making things very clear, step by step, so that no matter your skill level with the computer or the internet, we can get you there, hopefully. And another thing is the meetings and the events, um, you know, those are things that I think maybe older folks are more willing to come out to those types of in-person community engagement things than, again, somebody my age where I'd rather just go online.
Well, I was thinking if you have a need to target that community and you know that they have that disability, if you want to call it that, uh, technical diffi, difficulty, um, maybe for that specific issue, if you do that flyer, you put a, you know, a phone number that leads to a person that is set up to take them calls for that one issue, you know?
Uh, that's a great idea that we can definitely look at, you know, as we kind of form our promotion plan, so to speak. And another thing is, this touches on something on my next slide, which is to develop an ADA communications accessibility plan. Um, we really want to work more on increasing the accessibility of our website. Whether, you know, you need larger letters or you need the, the text on the screen read to you, we want to make those things possible on our website. And so that's something that we're going to be looking at, um, with this plan in the coming years as well. Um, and that kind of brings us to our second goal, which is to increase community trust of the city. Um, as we all know, people are viewing information with more skepticism than ever. And that's why it's even more vital for us to be consistent, clear, and transparent in all our communications. If they're hearing one thing from a city council meeting and reading another in hometown messenger and getting conflicting messages, that's not going to do anything for building trust between us and residents. And then also, it depletes staff time because then we end up with a bunch of phone calls and emails that we have to answer and clarify things. And it's just not very efficient. So, um, big goal is to create proactive, consistent communications that address the community's concerns and needs. Um, we're working on maintaining a proactive news presence on the city website, which is, of course, one of my favorite things to do is write about news. So, um, we're trying to do that so that people know that they can come to our website and read about what's going on and that it will be there and they can count on that being there. We're also working on responding to the public in an appropriate, um, and timely manner. And not that this is a huge issue anyway, but, you know, we want to make sure that we're getting back to folks in a forty-eight-hour window. They appreciate that. Nobody likes to sit around wondering for a week, are they going to get back to me? Do I need a call? What do I do now? And then you're frustrated. So that's going to be important in building that trust. And then we want to ensure information and tasks are easily accessible to the public. Um, creating materials that support plain and inclusive language, the ADA accessibility upgrades to the website, and also upgrading our cable programming to increase the reliability of that and the ease of use so that people can continue to livestream this, meetings like this from home, watch it on the cable channel, that sort of thing. Last, um, our third goal is to create an overall positive image of the city and community. So we want people to hear the word Shakopee and think about a community that's innovating, entertaining, and thriving. And to do that, we'll need to develop a consistent, one Shakopee community identity and city brand. Um, one Shakopee meaning South Bridge and this area are all the same city, even if it doesn't quite feel like it all the time. Um, a huge goal of mine in the first part of two thousand twenty-two is to create a City of Shakopee brand manual to improve consistency across all our communications, whether it's graphics or magazines or social media or a news article. Um, that's going to be huge, especially when we're training in other departments to do some of the communications projects and tasks. We want to increase promotion of positive Shakopee messages beyond the city organization. Um, one thing that, um, you, you guys are all familiar with, John, the communications specialist here. He and I have talked a lot about doing more human interest-type stories and really telling stories about good things people are doing in Shakopee, people who live here. Because even if it's not a story that's where the city is directly involved and it has to do with city government, when people read positive things about Shakopee, that reflects really well on us in general. So we want more of that. And we're going to expand city staff involvement in communications initiatives. And this has kind of already begun. We've trained in some staff from other departments to be able to update the website and things like that, to take a little bit of the administrative burden off of communication so that we can be focusing more on strategy and like higher-level thinking. And last, we want to inspire our city staff members to be brand ambassadors. Who better than to tell the story of the City of Shakopee than the people who work here and live and breathe City Hall every day? You know, we should all be really proud of our work here and we should be proud to work for this city and proud to live here, if we live here, you know? So I think that, um, that's something that I want to be pushing internally is that we all represent the city and we need to act like that.
Well, and that's what we do as council, I believe. And you're always an advocate for our community and, and, uh, speaking about how good we are and, you know, and try to expand that circle, so that's good.
Yeah, you guys are totally on that list, so.
Yeah.
Um, so having had a few months to settle into my role as Communications Manager and digest this communications plan, I am really eager to start tackling some of it. Uh, we just, yesterday, had our communications, uh, our second communications specialist start. And she will be focusing on graphic design, branding, and social media, which will enable John to get back to more video work, which we all know he is fantastic at, and for me to focus more on some of these longer-term goals with the community engagement and the ADA accessibility and translation services and things of that nature. So we are working on developing a tactical plan to implement these strategies in smaller steps through two thousand twenty-four. Um, I mentioned some of these, but currently in motion already is an audit of all of our branded materials so that we can slowly start rolling out the new city tagline. It'll take a while to never see community pride ever again on our, because it's on everything from, you know, Parks and Rec vests to letterhead. So that's something that'll be ongoing as we find things that need updating. We'll update that with the new tagline. Uh, we're researching social media archiving software, which will, um, bring us into compliance with Minnesota data practices laws and, uh, kind of shield us legally. Um, we will, we're training department staffs, staffs on, department staff on communication channels, like posting to the website, posting to some of our social media pages. Um, we are in the info gathering stage of offering translation services. I have a little bit of money set aside for two thousand twenty-two for this to kind of dip our toes in and start maybe translating some things to send home in red folders through the school district and partnering that way to maybe get more kids signed up, um, for recreation programs and that sort of thing. And then we are already planning to make upgrades to our cable prob, programming software. to our cable proba- programming software in early two thousand and twenty-two, and that will ensure that everything stays working smoothly so we can keep offering live streaming Zoom options when folks can't make it in with COVID and everything. And, um, we're just really excited. So, uh, with that, I'll entertain any questions you might have.
Questions? I think, uh, you're picking up where your predecessor left off. Um, it's exciting to see your energy come forward here on this, and, uh, two thousand and twenty-two's gonna be a great year to see some of these, uh, action steps get implemented and see where it goes. Counselor Whiting?
Uh, just wrote some notes and a couple asterisks in here, pull out, but, uh, uh, the key messages, I thought, were thoughtful. I mean, you don't really think of that, but you really, in, in communication, you really wanna focus on some things, and, and these are great, uh, messages to, you know, it's not like you're gonna repeat these things, but these are messages that we wanna bring out in different ways. Uh, the other point on the increased community trust of the city, um, the department-specific key messages, I think, is a good one, too. And then, uh, when you're talking about responding in forty-eight hour response rule, I'd like to see that by policy across the board for all departments, and I, I think that's what you're talking about.
Yep.
Not just by calling the communications director. But, yeah, I think that's great, 'cause, um, you know, people wanna, wanna, wanna hear back. I got a question, you know, might be a dumb question, but I wanna answer, you know? So, you don't always see that, uh, and I, I'm, I can attest to that, so. Um, thank you for that, so I appreciate it.
Counselor Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, going back to, I think, where you were talking about creating a positive image of the city and the community, I had seen something in, I think it was a newspaper or something, where Savage has that Good Neighbor, based on, um, the Good Neighbor Day. I think it was September, sorry, we're cheating here a little bit, September twenty-eighth, where we can, um, I don't know, find, I, I know Shakopee has a, a huge amount of good neighbors, and that'd be something we could do, you know, just to get stories out of some, someone who did something for their neighbor or something. I don't know, there's so many great things that happen, so that'd be something to kinda copy on?
Hey, I'm all about it. Thank you.
Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanna take off on Counselor Whiting's comment about the forty-eight hour response time. I think, you know, you might wanna think hard on that because sometimes the question that's asked is a technical question that might take longer than forty-eight hours to answer properly. But on the same token, responding right away within that forty-eight hour time limit saying, "We've received your question,"
Need more.
Absolutely.
Goes a long way. You know, that meets the twenty, uh, forty-eight hour response saying, "Yep, we've got your, your question. Uh, please look for a response shortly. We're, you know, checking into the details for you," or whatever. So, I, I, I don't wanna be solid on a forty-eight hour total answer because there's questions that may take longer. Maybe it's a holiday, you know, maybe it's a weekend.
I fully agree. Just a touch base of any kind, I think, is good so that they know, yep.
Just acknowledgement is good customer service.
Thank you. Counselor Brennan?
Um, I like the, um, the fact that you're looking at ways to translate information into different languages. I mean, if there, if we could have, um, or I don't know how that would work, but, so, it might not. But it, on the website, if it can translate to a different language or even if it was read in a different language, I think that would be really helpful. Um, and, um, if there was anything that I could do as a councilperson to communicate better, I would like to know, to make sure that I'm on that same, um, I'm giving out that same message and same information, and there is a cohesiveness. Um, so if we're included and, you know, this is the checklist that you should, you could follow to make sure that you're staying on, on the same message of what, what the council's made a decision on, I think that would be really beneficial. So, I really appreciate the fact that you, you talked about. Uh, we will be doing these things, and so, thank you for your presentation.
Thanks, Counselor Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just on that note, on the communication, I know that when San Venture was done, the, um, when we asked for the response on the website, there was, um, you could say what language you wanted it. You just clicked on it and it translated the whole entire, um, website for you. So, I, I know we've done it before, so.
Some, I will, I'm definitely gonna look into that.
So, Amanda, do you need anything more from us, and?
This is information and feedback only, so.
If, uh, any of you have any points or suggestions, obviously, you can email or call Amanda. Uh, glad you're here. Uh, looking for, uh, uh, great outcomes, uh, continuing here in two thousand and twenty-two?
Mayor, maybe one of the, I don't know who this goes through, staff, but it is a communication issue. So, uh, Dick's Service put out these flyers to everybody about the transition for garbage service. And it said, "Go onto the city's website, forward slash DSI, whatever." So, I did that with my mother and, uh, to change what services you want. Well, that option is not there on the website.
Um, so, Mayor and Counsel, what happened with that was we put out a flyer. I'm, I'm assuming it's the one you got in the utility bill. Um, and we did the short links to, to make it easy. And Dick's had provided the form to set up your new account, and something, and we short linked it on our website. And basically, something happened on their end that killed the form for a brief period of time. We heard from maybe five people letting us know same thing that you, that happened to you. You know, it was a dead link. And so, um, thankfully, Dick's worked quickly with us and we were able to get it back up and running. And I've checked it the last couple days just to be sure, and it seems to be good now. So, if you go and try again, it, hopefully, will be up and running. But if it's not, definitely let me know.
Additionally, Councilmember, um, Dick's went around and did an audit of the service levels that residents had at their homes in the community. So, um, for whatever reason, we just kind of crossed paths in the night, I guess. Um, the service level selection was not on there because Dick's proactively went out and audited all of the homes to see what they had. So, the default is the service level that, um, the residents do have at this time. But if and when you call in and you'd like to change that, you're certainly welcome to.
So, it's a call-in, not a go onto the city website to do this, because that's what the flyer said.
The, sorry.
Uh, go ahead.
Oh, I was, I was just gonna say, the, the, um, the form on the city website is just to get your account set up so that they have your information, and like, if there's a service alert of some kind, they can send out messaging to you. But as, uh, Chelsea said, basically, service levels are staying the same based on what they saw when they visited.
So, I have to call them?
If you would like to change.
What if I wanted to change my local service?
Yeah, call them. Okay, we need to get that out to the general public.
Yeah, we can definitely post something about the service level changes because, um, you know, I could see that being a confusion point with it, not on the form, but, um, we'll add that to the garbage holler transition page.
They, because on that flyer, it has the service levels and prices, and if you wanna have, recycling, I think, was always, uh, every other week.
Correct.
And the size of the can, I think you only have one option. But the garbage side of it can be every week, every, every, every other week, and then there's three options for sizes. But you can't make any of them changes without calling, if you wanna make a change.
I believe so, yes.
So, we need to get out there that, that form.
If you need a change in service.
You need to call Dick's.
If you wanna get your, get your billing online, that's when you would go and use that other form.
Yep, and we have been getting a significant, uh, amount of calls, so the, the flyer and the phone numbers has been working well. Um, we've been getting a lot of phone calls at City Hall about that, and, um, we're trying to make sure that everyone answering calls on a front line and/or getting transferred calls has that same information.
Good, good.
Great feedback.
Excellent. Um, again, thank you very much for your strategic communication plan, presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, then, eleven B one, Windermere, uh, Neighborhood Park Concept. And Alyssa Olson will present, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Uh, my name is Alyssa Olson, I'm a senior planner, if I can get my...
Thanks for being here.
Thank you. No, I just need to go full screen. Hang on. Still figuring, figuring out the computer.
Come on.
All right, so I'm here to talk to you about the concept plan for Windermere Park. Uh, a little bit of background. Windermere Park is on the southwest corner of Windermere Way and Seventeenth Avenue, and it's right across the street from Benedictine Senior Living Community. Um, and this area is identified in our Parks, uh, Trails and Recreation Master Plan as a new park. That's part of a larger park system, which you can see in this image, um, that's planned to serve the larger Windermere, um, area, which is still developing. So, for this park plan, we've done quite a bit of community engagement. Um, early in the year, we started with letters to everyone who lives within a quarter mile of the park. And there was a virtual presentation that people could watch at any point, um, with a link to an online survey. Um, and we received a hundred and thirty-seven responses to that survey. Um, and then, we used that information to create an initial concept plan and brought that back to the community this fall. So, we, uh, sent postcards to neighbors. Um, we had signs in and around the park with links to our, um, online, uh, or community engagement website or a phone number to call if they wanted to give feedback. And we had two hundred and twenty-one people visit that website. Um, I held an open house at the Senior Living Facility, and we brought it to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. So, with all of that feedback, we made a final round of revisions, and that is the concept plan that you have today. So, what did we hear? Um, we hea- we heard that there's a preference for a nature-based park and playground. Um, the top priorities were a playground and trails to walk throughout the park. And we heard a lot of people, um, with concerns over the accessibility of the park with the steep slopes, um, so making sure that there was, were places to go in the park for people with all mobility levels. So, the total project cost is one point three million, and that's paid for out of our park development fund, which, um, we've been collecting park dedication fees from the Windermere Neighborhood for a number of years now, and that's where that goes. The site itself, um, has some pretty extreme topography. Um, there's ponds and bluffs and steep slopes. Um, and at the very center of the parcel, it's actually one of the highest points in the city. Um, so, the photo on the left is, um, we flew the drone up to where, um, the proposed observation tower would be, just to kinda give you an idea of what that might look like. So, I'll walk you through the site plan and I'll call out some of the major features. Um, so first thing is the playground. Um, oops, this is a hillside playground, um, and then there's an open play space, um, near the road, and we are showing a fence between the sidewalk and the open play area. Um, this is kind of an example of what that playground could look like. So, we've got some nature-themed elements on the left, and then you can see what a hillside playground could be. So, um, slides going down the hill, and then there's climbers to get back up to the top. And then if we go up to the top of the bluff, um, there's two ways to get there. One way is ADA accessible, the other one is a little bit too steep to be so. Um, there is a picnic area, a hammock and grove, and the, an observation tower. So, it's a taller tower that you'll be able to see out over the river valley from. And this, uh, these are some examples of what the tower could be. This is still a concept plan, so we're just, um, kinda looking at, at ideas. And then this is what we mean by hammock grove. So, this is popular with teenagers. Um, you can bring your hammock and hang it up and hang out with your friends. All right, and then we have, uh, what's called the immersive nature trail. So, this would be a natural surface path. Um, it would be kind of winding through the woods, lots of benches to sit, um, and another hammock grove. And then, the idea is there would, there would be things like bird feeders or maybe bat houses, bug houses, and some interpretive signage, uh, to kinda have that nature experience. And these are just some examples of, of what that could be like. So, that is what I have. Do you have questions or feedback?
Great presentation. Questions, Counselor Brennan?
Um, yep, I had a, a coffee with the people at Benedictine yesterday, and, and they were talking about the concept plan that you had been there, and they were pretty excited about having the park so close, close to them. Um, one, a couple of the people commented that they would like to see handrails in the area, um, in certain areas, I don't know, in that nature area that you're talking about or, or something, because they do get a little unsteady on their feet. Um, I know that you have the tower, um, as one of the amenities, and is that, does that have to be ADA accessible, or how?
Uh, the tower itself, I don't believe has to be. We're working on, um, bringing in our ADA specialist that does a lot of that stuff, um, to talk about the tower, and we haven't quite got there yet.
Okay. I think it's pretty exciting. I, I think it's a great, I know that we talked about the fact that this is just a portion of it, and it'll eventually wind through with the Windermere, and I think we were calling it the spine at one point, where there would be a different pockets of amenities that are along this area. So, I think that's pretty exciting to see that coming.
Yes, the spine was just installed within the last few weeks.
Yep, yep, I saw that.
Counselor Lehman?
Uh, restroom, water fa- fountain?
Uh, we do have shown on here a fenced-in area for a Porta-John. Um, we haven't included a water fountain at this point, um, but we could look at that.
I would imagine if we're gonna have elderly walking through there, well, anybody going for hikes probably have access to water.
Yeah, and one of the things we heard from, um, the seniors across the street was that they wanted to have benches very regularly throughout. So, that was one of the ways we responded to them. Um, but drinking fountains and handrails are also something we can look at.
I like the nature theme of, uh, elements. Those are pretty cool, just because of the area where it's at, obviously. Yeah, so it's, it's pretty neat, thank you.
I just kinda, it's, it's, it's different from our other parks. So, it's, uh, in that way, I think it's, uh, it's great because it provides just another opportunity for something else.
That's what we heard from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board also, yeah.
Actually, the play, or, I'm sorry.
No.
The play area kinda remind me of, uh, Corey Lake Park Bike, Bike Trail, but it is.
Yeah, with the logs. No biking on these ones.
Um, I think this is exciting because we've been talking about it, or, you know, once the, the, this west end here and the growth and D.R. Horton and the build-out of, uh, Windermere, and we've been talking about the, the, you know, one of the, the bluff and protecting that spot and then getting access, uh, one of the highest spots here. Um, I'm a big fan of the Lookout Tower because, uh, to even be twenty feet off the ground and like that one drone picture showed, uh, you know, I'd love to see the three sixty-five, 'cause I'm, you know, you can see back into the community and maybe even, uh, up into Eden Prairie, uh, looking to, more to the east or to the west, I think would be spectacular. Um, I think this is gonna offer a lot of amenities for our residents. Um, I, I think it will get used by the, the seniors, and we have to, uh, help accommodate them, but certainly if they, the grandkids come over and play for, they can get over to that park. Um, but this is great, and you're correct that there's, there's more park features that come, that run more to the southwest on here. Um, but I've been waiting for this, so it's exciting.
Thank you.
The scooter obstacle course in there makes sense.
Well, we'll, we'll. This is preliminary. I mean, we don't have a, enough information with, uh, tower and all this kinda thing because I, I kinda wanna see more information about the tower before I'm sold on that idea because, A, it's limited to who can use it, B, it's a, it's, you know, there's, there's some liability there. And, uh, you always have the replacement cost, so until we know what we're actually into, I'm kinda reserved on that part of it so far.
I, I'd like to see it lean toward a little more ADA accessibility opportunity, but like she said, she doesn't have that conversation, but this, this is a concept.
Right.
Lake Rebecca?
Mayor and Council, so, um, Alyssa came from Three Rivers Park District, and at Lake Rebecca, they just did a tower. Um, so she's pretty familiar with them. And they actually added some slides and some other pieces. So, if you don't wanna go all the way up to the top, you could go up and come down on a slide or other pieces. So, our consultant, as they- So our consultant, as they get your feedback and get further into this, will come up with some proposals. The other piece I wanted to mention is the other bluff, which runs along County Highway 169. That trail right now just comes to a dead end, because we have not been able to acquire that. Next council meeting, you will see a acquisition and donation for the, one of the larger pieces. So we're starting to put the pieces together out here.
Well, great. More, do you need more feedback?
No, that was great, thank you.
Great, thanks for being here, thanks for the presentation, do appreciate it. All right, now we're gonna move to our workshop in 12A. And we're gonna talk about everybody's favorite sanitary sewer and storm drainage rate study. And I don't think we can, we're not gonna see a video, so that's good. Steve's gonna present.
And then I bring up, let's talk railroad again? No, the right one. Mayor and council members, good evening. I just wanted to give a brief info.
Did we run out of money, Jim? Saving you money.
Thanks.
Brief info to our team that we'll be presenting to you. But first, as part of our annual fee schedule update, as part of our budgeting, as part of our cash flowing, we typically, for the sanitary and sewer drainage funds, we look at both ends, the revenues and expenditures, obviously. But notably, we have, for the revenue side of these two funds, we have development fees and user fees. So, and they go, you know, they both go into the sanitary fund and into the storm fund. So we want to make sure we have a good balance on those revenues. So to help us ensure we have fair and equitable fees, this year, we performed a deeper dive on a utility rate study for both of these funds. And fast forward, I'm pretty pleased to present that our fees are actually where they need to be generally. So we're not gonna be proposing big swings in fees. There's one outlier there that we'll discuss, but they're pretty close to where they need to be. So here to present this deeper dive are our consultants. We have Allison Fausky with WSB and Jessica Cook with Ellers. Jessica Cook, I will tell you, is a whiz at plugging and chugging these numbers and making sure that, that things make sense. So I'll turn it over to them, and they're via Zoom here. So I'm gonna try to coordinate switching slides with them. So Jessica and Allison, I'll turn it over to you.
Welcome, WSB.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And thanks, Mayor and Council, and thank you, Steve. I know that we saved the best for last tonight, right? So we appreciate being able to participate by Zoom on this snowy night. And I can't see your faces very well, so I'd like this to be as interactive as possible. If you have a question, please know that I can't see your body language, so just jump in and ask me what you're curious about. So this is our agenda for this evening. We're gonna talk a little bit about rate studies in general in the city of Shakopee, and then talk about the individual funds and what needs to happen next. Steve? So about rate studies, I've been doing rate studies for almost twenty years here in Minnesota and at Ellers. And you have the two utilities that you operate, sanitary sewer and storm. And as Steve mentioned, we looked at both the development-related fees and the utility fees, the monthly charges. Now, state statute requires that you set just and equitable rates. But other than that, you have a lot of policy latitude about setting your utility rates. There are some goals we have for the utility funds, however. One of them, we heard from staff, that it's important for your community to ensure that growth pays for growth. And let me say what I mean by that. That means that when you're, when a new development is coming in, and you have to extend the sewer lines, for example, or build new catch basins for your stormwater system, that you would collect fees from that new development to pay for it. So the cost of new development is borne by the development itself. Another thing that we want to make sure that the funds do is that they pay for themselves. So these are set up as enterprise funds, and that means that they're run like a business, and they shouldn't have any support from property taxes or other funding sources. With that, we want to make sure there are adequate cash reserves, and that you can pay for capital improvements, which you have been commendably paying for with cash. And we want to continue using cash rather than debt financing as much as we can. When we came and looked at the utility, we observed that they have been really well managed. And you have good cash reserves, as I mentioned. Your capital projects have been funded with cash. And you've been able to do that and still make sure that your rates and your fees are competitive with other communities in the metro area. So you've stayed on top of your needs in your utility fund, and staff was very knowledgeable and had really solid information. So I would like to commend them as well. One of the things that WSB did as part of the analysis is compared you with other communities about how many employees you have in your utility fund. And we noticed that for, this is a really tough comparison to do, because people often have combined utilities, and they don't allocate between water and sewer, for example. But we did find, as best we could, that the city of Shakopee has two less full-time equivalents operating in sanitary sewer fund compared to other communities. And we conjecture that part of this has to do with the fact that Spuck is doing the billing. And so you're paying them a fee to do the billing rather than hiring somebody yourself. And the other part of it is probably due to some efficiencies and allocation of staff, as I mentioned. So we made some assumptions during the rate study. And I want to go over the key assumptions, because if you feel like we got these wrong, then we may need to take another look at our work. But a key assumption is how much is the city going to grow? Because growth not only generates development fees, but it also develop, excuse me, generates new utility revenue going forward. So we assumed one hundred and seventy-five new single-family units per year. And then the multifamily projects that your planning staff anticipates through 2025 and none thereafter. So it's a very conservative assumption that the boom in apartment dwellings will abate, that the market will shift. We also took all the anticipated industrial and commercial projects, and then assumed sixty thousand per square foot per year thereafter. And this next slide shows the residential growth. And so you can see on that second line, the number of apartment units that was assumed. And then again, after 2025, we aren't assuming any apartments. And then the next slide shows the anticipated commercial growth. So you have quite a bit of commercial growth in the next five years. And then we're conservatively assuming sixty thousand square feet per year after that. The other key assumptions just really relate to percentage increases for operating costs. And I won't go through these, except to mention that your biggest sewer expense is the disposal fee for the MCES, referred to as MCES. And that makes up seventy-four percent of all of your sewer operating costs, if we exclude depreciation. So that's a big ticket item. It's a ticket, it's an item that you don't have control over, and you'll see as we go forward how that can affect your rates. So let's first talk about the stormwater fund. The stormwater fund has a number of large capital improvement projects planned, which is typical. Utilities are capital-intensive. You'll see them listed here, and I just want to note that the ones in blue are related to growth. They're anticipated to be needed to serve the development that we just talked about. And the ones in black are more routine maintenance and repair and replacement. The next slide says, well, for those, for those costs that are related to growth, as I mentioned before, we want to make sure that growth pays for itself. So therefore, we have a stormwater trunk charge that is charged when land is planted. And right now, that's fourteen cents per developable square foot. And in order for that fee to pay for all those costs that were in blue on the previous slide, it would need to go up two percent, two point one four, it would need to go up two percent, two point one four three dollars per developable square foot, which for stormwater, and given all the communities I work with, is a very reasonable fee. It's just over two thousand dollars for a single-family home, just as an example. So one of the things that we want to make sure doesn't occur is that you collect so much in development fees that not only are you paying for your capital costs related to growth, but you're using development fees to pay for maintenance and operations. And that's not permissible. So we did a comparison where we looked at all the trunk charge revenue we're assuming between now and 2035. And that's about eight point four five million in blue there. And we compared that to all of those blue items on the capital improvement plan, and that's about eight point four five million. So we're right on target with growth paying for growth. The next part of the stormwater fee, which you're all familiar with, is the monthly charge. And the monthly charge pays for the maintenance and operations, things like sweeping, cleaning out stormwater ponds, et cetera. Right now, that's two dollars and sixty-five cents per month for a single-family home. And then it gets a little bit more complicated for commercial property. For commercial property, they're charged eight dollars and four cents per acre times an RAF, which is a residential equivalency factor, times the size of their lot. And that fee structure is designed to make sure that parcels that are generating more stormwater runoff are paying more toward the system. So the more, the larger your parcel is, the more impervious your parcel is, the less stormwater retention you do on-site, the more you're gonna pay into the city's system.
Yeah, Jessica, we have a question by Councilor Lehman.
Yes, please.
I have two questions, actually. The first one was back a page where it talks about a fee for a single-family home. The year 2021 is two thousand thirty-three dollars. Is that new development or a current existing home?
That's, that's new development. So that's if you take, that's assuming that an acre of land is developed for single-family housing, and you put three houses on that acre. And you pay point one four.
Three.
Dollars or fourteen cents per developable square foot. And then you divide that by three, you get two thousand thirty-three.
Okay, and then my second question, if you can go back to where we were. The eight point zero four acre times the residential equivalency factor. So if you take a commercial property that doesn't have a lot of impervious surface, how is that factored in, or is it not factored in?
So my understanding, and Allison, correct me if I'm wrong, is that it's factored in through the RAF factor. And so that RAF factor is lower if you have less impervious surface or if you have more stormwater treatment on-site. So it ranges, I think it ranges between one point seven and three point three.
Okay.
Thank you, continue.
All right. So WSB has a stormwater specialist, and she looked pretty carefully at the structure and determined that it was meeting the policy goals of the city, that it was just inequitable, and charged more for those properties that were generating more stormwater runoff. What she did discover, however, in that process, was that there are some properties that are coded wrong in the billing system. So they may have a parcel of land that's vacant that got missed, for example. Or that's not vacant, but that has a, maybe a garage on it or something like that. Or maybe the RAF factor was incorrect for what's happening on the property. So she went through, and the city staff are still looking at this. But we estimate that if those corrections are made, it would generate another fifty thousand dollars in revenue for the stormwater fund. And if you go to the next slide, Steve, there are some examples of those properties that will see an increase. And I wanted to give you some of these examples in case someone says, "Well, I thought you said my stormwater fee was going up two percent," and it went up a lot more than two percent. That would be the case of one of these properties. And the two property owners that I think it will have the greatest effect on are the city of Shakopee and the school district, because you both own multiple properties in the city. And so I put those on the slide as an example, that the city of Shakopee will pay another six hundred and eighty-three dollars a month, and the school district, another five hundred and eighty-nine. And then a couple of other sample properties, and what the proposed impact of that correction. And that's just because they've been actually underpaying for the system and paying less than their neighbors with similar properties had been paying for several, well, I don't know for how long. So it's building more equity into the system. So the proposed increase in the stormwater utility fee is just one percent, because you have a pretty good cash balance to work with, and you have new users coming out of the system. And so the single-family rate is proposed to go from two sixty-five to two sixty-eight and one percent per year thereafter. And I really want to share with you how remarkable this is. Stormwater is an area where cities are facing a tremendous number of unfunded mandates from MS four regulations and other state and federal requirements, and let alone the wild climate swings we've been having. So to be able to offer a solid stormwater system with relatively low rates and not be facing big increases in your stormwater rates, you are in a unique and enviable position among your peers. And that's shown in the next slide. If you look at your bill comparison, these are the same cities that I think you saw yourself compared to in the budget presentation. And where you are now is in the light orange, and the one percent increase is in the dark orange. And you can see you are the lowest of your peer communities, the average being that blue line. And that's not expected to change.
Is that because of our, Jessica, the infrastructure capital improvements in the stormwater are not as high? I mean, we're pretty low here, and that's great news. But what are these other communities doing with such high fees? Is that because they have a more robust CIHP for stormwater?
Well, several of these communities are older than you, so they're at a different stage in their life cycle, and they don't have growth paying for some of the improvements. stage in their lifecycle, and they don't have growth paying for some of the improvements. Some of the capital, and yet they're having to replace those improvements that maybe developers paid for the first time around. So that's some of the situation. The other situation is evident on the next graph. And this shows your projected stormwater cash balance. So the, the dark blue bars show, on the left, show where your cash is now in 2021. You're at about 10 million. And we're drawing that down a little bit in 2023 to pay for some capital, but the 1% increases are keeping that relatively steady. So I don't know what's contributed to, historically, to your cash balance, but most of the communities I'm working with are, are going into, I, I didn't find your CIP unusual, but most of the communities I'm going, I'm working with are facing CIPs like yours without any cash to work with.
Okay. Councilor Lehman has a question.
Well, Mayor, I think part of it is, we do, and we have for many years, we do a constant road recon, and we do the stormwater at the same time. So we never, we try not to put ourselves in a position to be way behind, and that probably helps us long-term from having it all build up.
Active, active, ongoing maintenance, which has helped save the day rather than deferred maintenance, and then it gets more expensive.
We do the stormwater aspect with the road recon, and we pay for the stormwater portion of the recon out of the stormwater fund while we assess a portion of the roadway.
Very good. Thank you. Proceed.
So this slide has a lot of little letters and numbers on it, so let me try and break it down for you. It's a summary of all of your stormwater rates. And we've talked about the first three here, which are in the orange box, the single-family monthly bill, the commercial charge per residential equivalency factor per acre, going from 804 to 812, and the trunk charge. I did want to make you aware that there are two other development-related, growth-related charges in your city code. One is for storage and treatment, and, and the other is regional, a regional infiltration pond charge. And those charges are, as I understand it, seldom applied, but they're important to have in the code because if you have a development situation where people or the property owner cannot do any kind of stormwater treatment on-site, and they need to rely on a regional infiltration pond, for example, this would apply to them. And this is an area where WSB took a look and said, okay, if they can't do it on-site and the city has to do it ourselves, what is it going to cost the city to do that? And because of the cost of land, because you'd have to buy land to build these facilities, they calculated a fairly significant increase in these fees. So for example, if we look, probably the biggest increase, if we look at the last line on the slide, the regional infiltration pond charge, going from 1,400 per net developable acre to almost 45,000 per net developable acre. So that's a big increase. But I would point out that if the, if the city didn't charge it, the developer would have to buy the land, the city didn't provide that infrastructure, the developer would have to buy the land at the same price as the city would have to buy the land to make, make space for it on their development site. So it's, it's a way of not getting the developer to shift costs from themselves to the city. And as I said, it's my understanding that these are not charged very frequently. Allison, did you have anything to add on those? Excuse me.
Jessica, maybe if I could jump in here. If I, I could relate a project to the city council that they're aware of. Recently, we constructed the underground facility, stormwater facility at the government center. We call it Government Center Parking Lot A. So that's an underground pond, if you will. We didn't have to build that pond, but we could use that if there was a development upstream from that system. And if that development wanted to purchase a, if they could not provide stormwater treatment on their site, we could use that facility for that treatment, but these are what these fees would be for. It says they can't build it on their site, but we have it in a regional facility, so we could charge them this. We don't do that very often. I think we did it, Micah indicated the other day to me, we did it once since both him and I have been here in the last four years for infiltration, and it escapes me where it was right now. But we don't, we don't do it very often, and it's, it's really at cost. This is what it costs to build that facility, so.
Now, I want to ask a follow-up question on that. We have some regional ponds that aren't ours in our community, right? And so a developer would have to get permission to go in a linear pond along 169 and a MINDOT right-of-way, is that correct?
Typically, they're, they're, they wouldn't be allowed to use MINDOT right-of-way or county right-of-way to mitigate their stormwater treatment and build a pond. It, it, it might, there might be some areas around town where there's a perception of that happening, like along Trunk Highway 69 by the Summerland Development, there's a long linear pond on the south side of 169. They're actually city ponds.
Oh, they are. And so if those are city regional ponds, then they would pay this fee if, if, if they and we had enough volume to facilitate them?
That, that's the caveat. If we have additional capacity in that pond that was built into it already, we don't, we don't have too many of them around, so.
Mayor.
I got it, Councilor.
The way I understand this is what this 44911 is saying is if the city wanted to build a regional pond, we're estimating it's going to cost us 45 grand to buy the property to put that pond on.
And build it, correct.
Right?
Okay. I think that's enough clarity on that. Thanks, Steve. Continue, Jessica.
All right. Well, we'll turn our attention to sanitary sewer now. And just like stormwater, there's two components to sanitary sewer. There's the, the growth component and the monthly utility bill. And so when we looked at the capital improvement plan for sanitary sewer, we broke that down between what's growth-related and what is maintenance and operations. And again, the growth-related is in blue. There's a couple of big projects here I would point out. In 2021 and 2022, there's, well, in 2021, there's the lift station rehab that you are, are, I think, just finishing, and paid cash for that. And another million, if you add up all those 2022 projects, that's another almost $3 million going out in 2022. And then you have a little reprieve on projects until the 2030 time horizon with the Lift Station 16 Force Main Aligning Project, 3.5 million comes into play. And I point those out because when we look at the graph of what's happening in the cash in, in the sanitary sewer fund, you'll see where those big capital projects hit. But again, we have growth paying for growth. So right now, in terms of your development-related fees, there are two of them. There's the sanitary sewer trunk charge, which is $3,012 per developable acre. So the stormwater was on square foot, this is on acre. And the proposal is for that to go up under 3% to $3,095 per developable acre. The second component of the sanitary sewer fees that are paid by developers is the excess charge, or the SAC fee. And, and they pay one of those to the Met Council, but they also pay one to the city, which is currently $520 per SAC unit. And that's proposed to go up by the same percentage as the trunk charge, to $534 per SAC unit, and increase that 2.75% annually thereafter. So in our same example, where we take an acre property and build three single-family homes, and they each have to pay the trunk charge and the SAC fee, that ends up being a little over 1,500. Excuse me just a minute.
This is on new development.
New development only.
Right.
One-time charge.
$40 one-time charge per unit.
Right. So on the next page, we do a similar comparison where we look at the fees that will be collected from growth and compare those to the capital that are required to serve that growth. And we see that the fees are just slightly under the capital required. So they're pretty equivalent, which was our goal, just about 7 million each. So then we can talk about the monthly sewer utility fee. And the way that's structured is there are three components. There's the base fee or the base charge, which is $2.90 per month for every customer. Then you have two volumetric charges. And a volumetric charge is the charge that's paid per 1,000 gallons. And you have one that covers your biggest expense, which is the MCES disposal charges. And that's right now $2.60 per 1,000 gallons. And then you have one that covers all of the city charges, which is 85 cents per 1,000 So if you look at, at where you are now, this, if, these bars represent a sewer bill, a total sewer bill. The blue component is your base fee, and the orange component is your volumetric charge or your usage charge. And you can see that Shakopee's bill is low compared to these same communities that, that we used before. What's strikingly low is your base fee, the blue bar. It's the lowest. Lakeville is also pretty low. So one of the things we were asked to look at is, is that too low? And can we justify a higher base fee? So we did what we call a fixed charge analysis or a base charge analysis, and we took all of your fixed costs, because the base fee is supposed to pay for those kinds of costs that don't change, even if somebody goes away for the winter. You still, you know, have staff, you still have to send a bill, et cetera. So we added up all of those costs and determined that you had 820,427 dollars in fixed costs, which would translate into $6.02 per month. What that would mean, however, is that for somebody, let's say, two-person household that's now paying 290, they would get over a $3 per month increase in their bill, as would a hotel, but it's much more significant to your two-person household than it is to a hotel. So on the next slide, after a significant amount of discussion and running a number of options, we landed at keeping the base fee or the base rate fairly constant with where it is now, increasing it to $3 per month, and increasing the city rate from 85 cents to 88 cents per month.
Question, Jessica. Councilor Lehman?
Can you back up one slide? Your other operating expenses, flies, uniform, attorney, phone, printing, building rent, I want to focus on the building rent, the insurance, and spuck building fee. A lot of these charges that we're using here are charges that are built into the general levy and paid for by taxpayers upfront, and then paid again in your proposed sewer charge.
So these charges are all straight out of your financial audit, and were all fees that were paid out of the sewer fund. And so I don't believe they're also found in the general fund. I can verify that.
Well, when a department pays building rent, the people that fund that department are the taxpayers.
It's a depreciation fund and an enterprise fund that goes back.
Yep, but you're using that as an, as a reason to bill that same taxpayer to cover that cost again, which they have already costed, because that's a depreciation of a current structure 30 years out. So.
So I think it's a cost allocation issue. It's called building rent, but it's, it's taking the costs of operating the physical buildings of the city and saying a portion of those are used for the utility function, and therefore, we're going to allocate a certain portion of those costs to that utility function. And so it's, it's an accounting mechanism. That's my understanding of it. I can clarify that with your finance director.
That, that's correct, Jessica.
Okay. Continue.
So if we could go back one slide, Steve, I did want to point out that in 2022, we are anticipating kind of a, a bigger increase in the MCES rate. That's below the second circle, from 260 to 280. And that's simply a function of the volume that is discharged to MCES divided by the rate that they charge. And again, that's a cost that you don't have control over.
And that's a pass-through.
Right, exactly.
We tried to separate and make that more transparent a couple of years ago.
So here is the, the graph that shows what's happening with the cash in your sanitary sewer fund. And remember, I said there were those big improvements in 2021 and 2022 that you're paying cash for? That is drawing down your cash, but you're still in line with what we would see as a minimum target working capital of a little over 3 million. Then it builds up again. You have another improvement in 2027 where it dips. And then by 2030 and '31, it dips again. But in those years, we determined or projected that you wouldn't have enough cash to pay for the full 3.5 million dollars of improvements, that big improvement, and then there were smaller ones in those years. And so we're anticipating two bond issuances in 2030 and 2031. And that's 10 years from now, so things will change. But I did want to point that out, that that, that is a change from past practice of using cash for all of your capital improvements. So the next thing I wanted to show you was if you put sanitary, these sanitary sewer increases and the stormwater increases together, what is that going to do to some sample residential customers? And so on the top, we have a low-volume residential user that's using 3,000 gallons per month. And their bill is going to go up 80 cents per month in 2022, and then 25 cents in 2023. And again, that bigger increase in 2022 is because of what's happening at the Met Council. Your, maybe your average property user in the middle there using 5,000 gallons per month, their bill will go up $1.25, and then a high-volume user will go up $1.93. The next slide shows some sample commercial property owners. And someone using 10,000 gallons a month, their bill will go up 262. A multi- A multifamily property is going up twenty dollars and thirty-eight cents. And then I found the biggest volume user I could find in the city, which happens to be a hotel, and their bill would go up two hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty cents. But again, at least seventy-five percent or more, certainly more of that for the hotel, is related to the MCES charge, which is a pass-through. So when you look at the 2022 sanitary sewer bill, you're still below average compared to these communities that you compare yourself to and to most communities that I work with. And when, on the next slide, when we put both bills together, this is sewer and water, excuse me, sewer and stormwater together, you continue to be low compared to your peer communities, especially for stormwater, but for sewer as well. So the last thing we did is we took a look at how you compare with on the development fees. So that's the stormwater trunk charge and the sanitary sewer SAC and trunk charge. And here you get a lot of variety because of the communities that you've chosen to compare yourselves with, and they're in really different life cycles in their growth. So if you look at Roseville, for example, they don't have sewer or storm development fees. That's because they're fully developed. Excuse me. So they're just doing redevelopment. So they don't have, they haven't put in fees in place. But your fees are competitive. If you look at growing communities like Chaska, Inver Grove Heights, Lakeville, Prior Lake, your fees remain competitive. And this is for a single-family home. And on the next slide, we see it for a sample multifamily property, and there your fees are even more competitive.
Take it. Roseville or Blaine didn't provide enough data?
No, they just don't have fees. They don't charge.
Or stormwater.
Right. And Blaine is, I, Blaine is not a client, so I don't know that community very well. I don't know how much they're still growing. I know they still have some industrial land left, and I don't know why they aren't charging fees.
Well, they're collecting some money somewhere.
They're probably doing, there are other communities that don't charge fees like Hastings that I am familiar with. And what they do is, as part of the development agreement, rather than a flat fee, they negotiate how much they're going to pay depending on the site. So that's the end of the presentation. Again, I would just like to emphasize how well-managed I found the utility funds. And so these are our rate recommendations, which are pretty much stay the course. And if you're comfortable with them, then they would be brought back at your next meeting in December to adopt rates for 2022.
Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, I had a question for our city engineer. Is there any incentives or credits for a property that has, you know, a rain garden or rain barrel collection systems or any type of thing like that? Or is it such a small amount that it's just not measurable in the grand scheme of things?
Mayor and council members, we do not have that program. In the grand scheme of things, it is a very small amount, and they're very expensive BMPs compared to more regional systems. So it's good.
BMP?
Best management practice, like a rain garden, a storm pond, an underground vault or something like that, their, their cost per treatment benefit is high. But it is, it is good. It's a, it's a practice that if every homeowner did in the city, it would be very economical for the city because every homeowner is doing it.
Well, I just.
But we don't have credits for that set up.
I just noticed that the rainwater works better than, in the garden than the hose water does.
Absolutely.
It's all the nutrients in there, the real nutrients in it.
Right, right. All right.
Other comments of our consultant, our staff? I do, I brought this up, a question, agenda questions that went back out to councilors. So every year, we review these fees internally and make some adjustments. I know we worked on it a couple of years because, years ago, because we were looking at the balance in the funds and trying to really align that with the CIP and also make sure that that Met Council pass-through is very transparent, that we're collecting this fee and it just goes out the door. This is truly a rate study. And then would we, Jessica or Steve, would we consider this, this is a five-year rate study? And I saw the numbers got, you know, after 2026, we might do another rate study to make sure, right?
Mayor and council members, so on an annual basis, you know, I mentioned this is a deep dive. Jessica did put a lot of numbers together on each end. So we, for example, in 2023, we will, we will adjust these based on the construction cost index. So we do do that annually, and that's what we've been doing, looking back. So, but it is good practice to do these deeper dive rate studies frequently. I would say, looking back, even though we're right on target, we haven't done one in a while here. So it is, it is good, good best practice to do it every five years, certainly within every ten years, so.
Okay. No, I found the data much more inclusive this time. Uh, Councilor Lehman?
And the Met Char, Met Council pass-through is going to change, and we don't know what that change is looking out two or three, four years. So what numbers in this study is the best guess based on today, but realistically, we don't know what that number's going to be.
It's not going down.
Not going down.
Well, you never know. Technology's going to fix something, right?
And I did find that, that I saw on a slide that, and I read in the packet, that seventy-five percent of the rate increases due to the Met Council MCESV, right?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions for our consultant? Jessica Allison, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This item here is just for us to receive the draft, offer any feedback we can. We will see this back on the 21st?
You will. We'll include this with Lori's fee rate for the entirety of all the fees that the city looks like. We will update these fees. Already have them updated pending, you know, any certain discussion or changes that you guys would recommend tonight.
It'll be built into the fee schedule, right?
Correct.
I got that. Last comments? Last comments? If not, thank you all.
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
Good night.
Good evening.
All right, moving ahead then to 13A is the city bill list. Any questions, comments on that? Seeing none, then we would move to the liaison report, and we'll start over here. Councilor Contras?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have one.
That's fine. Councilor, waiting.
Thank you. I just have a quick announcement about MVTA Stuff the Bus. This is a benefit for the CAP Agency, and so it's a food drive, stuffing the bus at several locations. They'll have the bus at the Shakopee Cub on the 11th. So is that Friday? Saturday, the 11th, and that's going to be from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. So if you want to help out with some food donations to help out the CAP Agency food shelf, Stuff the Bus, there's also several other locations. If you see that bus, another grocery store, please help out. Thank you.
Councilor Lehman?
Scale executive met, and we basically went over meeting topics for the next four or five months. So it's more of a housekeeping executive session. Friday, is it Friday or Thursday coming up here? We're having that part two of that legalized marijuana, just listen and learn. Comments from council, positions? Nobody wants to say what their stance is on the issue?
Well, I'm not a fan.
I'm, I went in totally open because I think it's good to hear the information. And there's, you know, there's pros and cons to everything. I don't know how, I mean, with alcohol, it's easy. They can pull you over and they can find out what your level of intoxication is, but I don't know of a test that works on marijuana or prescription drugs other than a blood test. And I don't know how you would do that, but I don't know.
I have a question.
Sure.
On, I noticed the, the video that was put out by Scale and actually the two videos.
Right.
Who put that together? And who, what, who determined what the content was? And how much money was it?
I'll find out how much it cost and who put it together. I think it was Barry was his name, maybe? I could have that wrong. So let me write that down and find out for you.
Yeah, and who determined the content on that?
All right.
And why was there two?
Do you have more of your liaison?
No, that's all I have.
Councilor, thank you very much. Councilor Brennan?
I had Spuck meeting last night, and Spuck is also going through the rate studies, the rates for water and electricity. I think it was 20 years since the last time they did a fully in-depth rate study. And one thing that they found on electrical was that they had reserves that were at eighty-six percent reserves in the electricity fund. So they'll be, we'll be spending that down to be approximately fifty percent in the next, within five years. So it was quite high. The water fund was different. It wasn't, we didn't have that luxury on the water. So rate for residential rates, for a typical residential rate for electricity for 2022 will be increasing fifty cents per kilowatt hour. And for water, for the typical residential, will be increasing about thirty-seven, thirty-seven cents per gallon.
Per thousand gallon, right? Thirty-seven cents per gallon, you said?
Yeah.
Per gallon?
Per.
Thousand.
Per bar?
Thousand gallons.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, a thousand, thousand gallons, sorry.
Okay, just checking.
Yeah.
I saw bankruptcy in my future.
Yeah. I know they always use more than your neighbor, but boy.
Yeah. And let me see what else is there. We talked about the pilot. We approved the pilot agreement. I think that's, we talked about a lot of things.
What's driving these increases in the water and electricity?
Well, for the electricity, I think it was making sure that we don't have a spend-down of it, but that really for the water is, is the projects that are coming up.
The rate study, I think, would have showed that they probably had some loss there.
Yeah, so it's a five, one percent on electricity and five percent on, on.
Water.
I think they've held their water back in cost per thousand for a while, and it sounds like it's been a while on a rate study, so. There you go.
Uh, no.
I did note that the utility did pass the pilot agreement, and I know we're, we didn't, we don't have it in front of us, but that subcommittee met four, five, six times. That partnership is stronger than ever. And the utility has changed in the last couple of years. They still do a great job delivering the utilities, but the strong partnership and togetherness, collaboration between the city and the utility hasn't been this strong in 20 years. Well, thank you. For my mayor report, last Saturday, attended Holiday Fest downtown Shakopee, great event. We had a walk-through parade, which I was pretty hesitant on prior because parade has a lot of cool stuff. But this walk-through aspect of a parade, a standstill, and everybody can walk up to it, the residents enjoyed it because they got to go at their own pace and maybe ask a question or talk. The float people liked it because they got to much more interaction versus a float coming by and having 45 seconds and you throw some candy out. You don't get that. But I, from every float that I saw that I, I was part of the judging committee, the interaction with the residents was the highlight of it. So that was interesting on that, the big hit. Tree lighting, fireworks, I think the gathering of our residents is the best. It brings out the best in our community every time. And I know we didn't have much one of last year, so great to do that. Also, on Monday, the Stern Tribune put out an article about our cultural corridor, really highlighted that, talked to me, talked to the Shakopee, or the Scott County Historical Society. We're trying to gain a lot of traction there. Of course, we have a request in front of the state bonding committee for some riverbank stabilization. Also, we have, we're in front of the federal government to try to get some money for the cultural corridor. Andrew Craig is heading that up. So I thought it was just good publicity. We were talking about our communication plan today and trying to get more visibility by a third party, right? Someone not that's a city. So I thought the article read very well. Great to see the hometown messenger, a lot of stuff. And I will mention that a lot of city stuff in one half, but the other half is for Park and Recs. Sign up for those winter programs. And one of them, it's kind of, we're starting the, we're in the midst of holiday season here, but, you know, come January, everybody goes, oh, you need to do something about fitness. So join the community center or, if you're thinking about it, the Park and Recs Department's going to have a fitness open house on January 8th from 8:00 to 11:00, and you can sample a couple of their fitness programs for free. And I thought that was kind of unique. I know they've done it before. And so maybe encourage residents to do that. That is my report. Do we have an administration report?
Yes, lots of things to cover. Shouldn't be more than 20 or 30 more seconds. We went over the holler transition a little bit. We've got lots of staff that's put a lot of work and time into this, and it's going really well. We're getting a lot of engagement, a lot of phone calls, so it's going really well. And first note, it's a good reminder, street park, or off-street parking for the wintertime, 2:00 and 6:00 AM, I believe, is when we need to be off the streets, and that goes through March likely, so.
With the downtown caveat, let's not forget.
Downtown caveat, yes. We do have that thoroughly outlined on our website.
My wife said, what? We can't park on the street. It's the downtown, it's different. So check the website.
Specific areas. So yes, check the website, give us a call. We try to put that out as many ways as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item 14, is there any other business before this council? Any other business? If not, entertain a motion? Councilor waiting.
Motion to adjourn to Tuesday, December 21 at 7:00 PM.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn to December 21 at 7:00 PM. Happy holidays to all. I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned at 11:44.
10:40.